Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Pasadena City Council on Monday, April 4th. During the last hour, the council was in closed session, as previously announced, and took up items A and B. No reportable action was taken with respect to those matters. As to item B, instructions were given to our negotiating representatives to take the next step in regard to the discussions that are underway. We call the public meeting to order, and the first step is to check the attendance. We turn to the city clerk, Mr. Mark Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hatterline?
Present.
Councilmember Holden? Councilmember Madison?
Here.
Councilmember McAustin? Councilmember Robinson? Councilmember Tornick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Borgdahl?
Here.
Mayor Bogard?
Present.
There is a form of the council president.
Thank you. Mr. Hatterline, will you lead us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Would be honored to do so. Please rise. Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America.
We have certain ceremonial actions tonight, and the first involves an appearance by a group of friends of Pasadena from our sister city in Finland, Järvenpa, Finland. And the president of the Pasadena Sister Cities Committee, Marcia Montez, is here tonight to introduce the teachers and the students who arrived in California on Saturday and have a week planned, various visits at the Huntington Library, at Jet Propulsion Laboratory, at Caltech, and in other locations in Pasadena and Southern California as part of their cultural and educational exchange here in Pasadena and the area. Marcia, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bogard. Councilmembers, good evening. I'd like to introduce to you Pasi Katalainen, who is from Järvenpa, Pasadena, or the Järvenpa person who takes care of the sister city in Järvenpa. Sorry about that. He is also a physics teacher. We just finished meeting with Alice Petrosian also to learn about the Pasadena Unified School District because the University of Helsinki is doing some research on school principals and leadership. So we're becoming very involved with our sister city in Järvenpa. And I'd like to introduce Pasi, and he will introduce the delegation that has come with him. If he would come forward, please. And if you all would step forward, our students.
Mayor Bogard, and dear friends. I'm Pasi Katalainen, and I'm the chair of the Sister Cities Committee in Järvenpa. And our delegation here is principal, Atse Taipala, and he is five, Lena Taipala. And we have five students who attend Space and Technology Program that Sister Cities Committee of Pasadena has helped to arrange here in Pasadena. And our students are Jen Järvenpa, Yitti Peeltala, Lena Inkila, Parju Thukkane, and Maia Peeltala. And we are very grateful to Sister Cities Committee of Pasadena. They have gave us the possibility to come here to attend those activities you have here concerning our Space and Technology Program. And we are very grateful, and we'd like to continue this program further, to develop exchange, student exchange program, so that students would come here when they have school time. And we also like to receive students from Pasadena during school time, and so develop the home exchange program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We welcome you. Wish you a very rewarding and enjoyable visit here in Pasadena in California.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for allowing us to introduce them. Sorry about that. We've been running since about 7 o'clock this morning.
Next on the agenda for the council during ceremonials is the presentation of a proclamation declaring Senior Citizens Day, which will be received by Sam Thomas, a longstanding member of the Pasadena Senior Commission and chairman of the 2011 Conference on Aging, which is taking place soon. He will be accompanied by Marvin Schacter, who is an executive council member of the AARP. Both Mr. Thomas and Mr. Schacter have been involved in the Conference on Aging from its inception, a program that has developed into a tremendously important and far-reaching resource for seniors in our region. And I'm hopeful that we'll get a little bit of an idea about how that conference is shaping up, Sam, for this year.
Okay. Well, we'd like to thank you, Mayor Bogard, for joining us on Thursday, April 21st, for our conference. It's going to be starting at 8:00 at the First Church of the Nazarene on Sierra Madre Boulevard. And it starts around 8 and ends about 1:30. We have a continental breakfast, which is free, and also lunch, and we have about 26 workshops. I'm going to ask Marvin just to mention some of those workshops because I think they're pretty exciting. Marvin?
We're distributing to you the incredible list of workshops that will take place on the 21st. I want to say that they are really, in itself, means of seniors equipping themselves to meet the vicissitudes of aging. There's an old saying among seniors that aging isn't for cowards. But I do want to say, in addition to these workshops, this is a peculiar time in the senior community. Seventy-five years ago, we passed Social Security. It took another 30 years to have Medicare adopted. It took nearly another 30 years to have a prescription benefit adopted. And now, this year, every one of these programs witnessed today's newspapers, the front-page story in this morning's papers. Those are the programs under attack. And I just learned something else that people should be aware of when they're concerned with seniors. There's a senior employment program that employs 83,000 very low-income people, seniors. That program has now been cut by 64 percent. There's another program, the Senior Corps, in which 450,000 seniors work in schools, community organizations, as volunteers. That program has been wiped out by the current budget adopted by the House of Representatives. There's a Section 202 supportive housing program for elderly seniors. That program has been slashed by two-thirds. In other words, this is a period when, as we celebrate Senior Day, we should recognize that the safety net that has been created during the last 75 years is now in enormous danger, affecting this generation of seniors, and to you young folks on the city council, your generation as well. But we invite you to attend our workshops this coming conference.
Let me just finish by saying we're going to focus on successful aging, your health, your finances, any number of things. So I think it'll be worth your time, and it can be from staying fit, keeping your brain fit, any number of great workshops. We also want to thank our main sponsor, which is Kaiser Permanente. They're providing us a great deal of help and financial support, and we're very grateful. We're also grateful, of course, to the City of Pasadena Senior Commission, AARP of California, the Pasadena Senior Center, a number of groups come together to help us make it possible. And anybody watching tonight is invited to join us. It's free. Just register with us. If you'll allow me, I'll give a phone number. It's 877-926-8300. If they call us, we can register them and they can join us. So, thank you. Even if they don't register, you can still come and join us. We'll pass these out to the city as well. Bogard?
Thank you.
Sorry we got so long-winded.
Sam, to spotlight and to support the 2011 Pasadena Conference on Aging, a proclamation will be issued. It is in front of me. It captures the information about the history of this important program over the years. This year, the featured speaker is Dr. Juanita L. Watts, M.D., Regional Coordinator for Women's Health, Kaiser Permanente, Southern California Region. The sponsorship, as Sam mentioned, includes the Pasadena Senior Commission, Pasadena Senior Center, Kaiser Permanente, and AARP of California. The mayor and the city council wish to express appreciation for both the past and the continuing contributions of its older residents to our community and to our nation. Therefore, as mayor, on behalf of the city council, I do hereby proclaim April 21 in the year 2011 as Senior Citizens Day, and express appreciation for the continuing contributions to our community of the city's older residents. It's a pleasure, Sam, to present this to you and Marvin, and we hope you have the greatest success once again this year of this important program. Next element of tonight's ceremonials involves the administration of the oath of office. The clerk is here, and the persons who will be sworn in, at least those who are scheduled and expected, include Paula Corsetti of the Senior Commission, Rita Moreno of Parks and Recreation, Steve Mulheim, Old Pasadena Parking Meter Zone Advisory Commission, and
Any mental reservations?
No.
It goes without saying that we all appreciate your commitment to serve the city in this way. We wish you a successful and rewarding experience in this new position. If there's any way in which we council members can help, please let us know, and thank you for your service to a great city. That completes the ceremonial items on tonight's agenda. We do have a few cards for public comment, and the first is from James Peterson, and the second is from Ann Alderson. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council. Well, I appreciate the answer I got from the Freedom of Information Act for information on overflow drainage scoopers and stuff that dumps water on our property from five stories up. However, the information I got was just amateur whitewash. It was, there was not a single item involved with what I asked for on these things, how they're approved, how they're put in. Not a single item. And you read, they give you about six pages of data from over a period of eight years, I think, the city did. None of it applied to what I asked for. So I'm giving you 10 more days to come up with something reasonable, and if 10 days is not enough and you're working on it, I'll grant you more time. Otherwise, we're going to go elsewhere for our answers. And like the eight-year-old project, can you expect the neighbor to be in on everything that goes on? Just a few months ago, something came up. I just found out about it, and it was judged, oh, it's apples and oranges, you know? Well, they're both edible, so, okay, we'll pass it. I mean, the rationale of some of this passing stuff is unbelievable, and that's going to be brought up in a few weeks after some other bigger issues are settled. Well, they won't be settled, but they'll be talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. We turn to Ann Alderson.
Good evening, Mayor Bogor, and all council members. My name is Anna Alderson. I've lived in Pasadena for 25 years. Unfortunately, I'm now in a situation of being disabled. I have a service dog. And what I'm here for tonight is to let everyone know, nobody but nobody knows the federal law about a service dog. I'm constantly being discriminated against, the latest incident being Saturday night with my family at a restaurant where I was made to wait, embarrassed, and then made to wait again, until the owner of the restaurant came to me and said, "You cannot bring your dog until..." A person that happened to be sitting at the bar walked over to the owner and said, "That is the law." We were placed outside, on a side of the restaurant, and everything that happened that evening, and every time I do something in this city, pretty much the same thing happened. Nobody but nobody, and I think it includes probably many of you, don't know the federal laws. It's called the American Disability Act. It has the commonly asked question about service animal in places of business. I think it believe it's 10 questions. They're answered very simply. I gave you each a copy of it. And nobody follows that law. And everybody comes to me and say, "The city says, the state says." It doesn't matter. This is a federal law, and it supersedes all other laws. So my request tonight is that you distribute this to the businesses here in Pasadena so that I will not have to go through this again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One thing I'm inclined to do, based on this request, is to place these rules in front of the Accessibility and Disability Commission with a request that they let us know how they have grappled with this set of rules in the past in terms of communicating to the community. It's also possible that the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce and the Pasadena Restaurant Association would be willing to give some attention, thought to this, and use those vehicles to disseminate this information or confirm that they are aware of them and are trying to communicate that to the restaurants that operate in Pasadena. The next person who has requested the opportunity to speak is Rosa Villafana. Ms. Villafana, would you step forward? Good evening, ma'am.
Buenas tardes, señora alcalde y señores concejales. Mi nombre es Rosa Villafana. Soy la representante de la Asamblea de Vendedores Ambulantes de Pasadena.
Extra mic.
De Pasadena. De la ciudad de Pasadena.
Okay.
I pray for everybody a copy with the translation of what she's saying. Everybody must have it.
We have it.
Buenas tardes, señor alcalde y señores concejales.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Mi nombre es Rosa Villafana. Soy la representante de la Asamblea de Vendedores Ambulantes.
My name is Rosa Villafana. And I'm the representative of the Committee of Street vendors.
El propósito de nuestra visita el día de hoy es este honorable concilio.
The purpose of our visit today to this honorable council chambers
municipal es para hacerles saber la siguiente petición.
Is to make the following petition to you, or make it known to you.
La situación económica que actualmente hay en este país ha perjudicado grandemente a los sectores informales de la economía y los vendedores ambulantes.
The current economic situation of this country has greatly affected the informal sectors of the economy, including the sidewalk vendors.
Excepto nuestras ventas han bajado considerablemente, esto se ha...
Our sales have dropped considerably.
Se ha visto agravado por la preferencia de vendedores.
This has been worsened by the prevalence, proliferation of sellers who don't have permits to operate.
Sí, sí, por los vendedores sin permiso y sin licencia de negocio.
Vendors who don't have a license, a business license.
Quisieramos pedirles su ayuda en este sentido de tener más cooperación del departamento de policía.
We would like to ask your help in this respect, and have more cooperation from the police department and the public health department.
De Pasadena y del departamento de saludidad. Añadarnos a acercar estos compañeros sin permiso a nuestra comisaría.
If you could help us get these colleagues to come closer to us, the colleagues that don't have permits, and they could come closer to our committee.
Comisaría.
Comisaría.
Nosotros desde hace mucho tiempo, desde la última ordenanza que no podemos vender en las calles.
For a long time, since the last ordinance that we can't sell in the streets.
Solamente en los parques. Sin embargo, esta situación ha sido aprovechada por nuestra competencia.
That we can only sell in the parks. Nevertheless, the situation has been taken advantage of by our competition, the sellers who have no license.
Vendedores sin licencia que usan carritos de madera o carritos de marqueta.
They use wooden carts or supermarket carts.
Que no cumplen con los requisitos mínimos del departamento de saludidad.
That don't fulfill the minimum requirements of the health department.
Y que se mueven impunemente debido al tamaño de los carritos.
And they're able to move that freely because of the size of the cars, the carts.
Esto nos causa problemas provocando que se nos confunda y se nos culpe a los vendedores ambulantes por esta situación.
This causes a lot of problems and has come to have us be confused with the others, and we are charged with being the street vendors who are breaking the permits.
Por esta situación lo cual es falso nosotros, si cumplimos todos los reglamentos necesarios para poder operar un pushcart.
But we do fulfill all the requirements required for operating pushcarts.
Okay. Queremos que se modifique la ordenanza actual con los siguientes puntos.
We would like the ordinance to be modified with the following points.
Extender el tiempo de cinco minutos a una hora en la calle.
To extend the time, sale time, from five minutes to one hour of sales in the streets.
No limitar cuatro horas el tiempo en los parques.
To not limit the time in the parks to four hours.
Ya que el clima presenta de cinco a seis horas mínima.
Since climate is good for five to six hours.
Sí, ahora dice actualmente el tiempo. Permitir que los vendedores debidamente registrados puedan vender frente a las escuelas, ya que actualmente los vendedores sin licencia lo hacen.
And to allow the street sellers who are properly registered to sell in front of the schools, since the vendors who don't have a license are doing it already.
Por último, queremos retirar nuestro, no, reiterar nuestro profundo agradecimiento al concilio de la ciudad de Pasadena.
And finally, we would like to thank, give our profound thanks to the Pasadena City Council.
Por toda la ayuda prestada a este colectivo en el pasado.
For all of the support given to this collective in the past.
La actual ha sido fundamentalmente para nuestra existencia como grupo. Muchas gracias.
This support has been fundamental for our existence. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The city manager has indicated that certain work is underway at City Hall that is relevant to the questions and the requests that have been made in this statement. That work is not complete, but it might be worth having some indication as to staff's awareness that this is, these are issues that should be improved if they can be.
And one last petition, if you allow me, is that we would like to be part of this discussion because we would like to be involved in the process. We can have a lot of suggestions, and maybe in our experience, we can help this group if you can ask them to invite us to be part of this committee. We would like to be honored.
Certainly, your request is part of the record and part of your statement that is being received by the council at this time. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, thank you. This involves the pushcart ordinance that we adopted some years ago and enforcement of that ordinance, but I do think that it's time to revisit the ordinance and see if we can improve upon the ordinance now that we've had a few years of experience. can improve upon the ordinance now that we've had a few years of experience. And so I'll ask my field representative, Vanya, to contact the Association of Vendors and work with staff to maybe bring the ordinance for review, just in the first instance, to EDTEC, just to see what some of the issues are. I think that's the appropriate committee to start off with.
Thank you.
Gracias. Este, la ordenanza la vamos a mandar al comité, un comité del Consejo Municipal. Y Vanya, le voy a pedir a Vanya que le llame.
Por favor. Gracias.
We'll leave it at that and benefit from the review that is given to the ordinance as it exists and our experience with it by the committee and by staff in that regard. The council, pardon, the council's agenda contemplates that the next item will be taken out of order. This is item 13 on the agenda. A demonstration of a new online capability that is intended to increase the ability of members of our community to pursue municipal services at City Hall. This is labeled on the agenda, "The Demonstration of Citizen Service Center by Department of Information Technology." And we expect this presentation to take perhaps 10 minutes and...
Mayor, before we start, I wanted to give it a context just shortly. Ever since I arrived at the city of Pasadena, we've been chatting in the public meetings about the context of creating what's referred to as a 3-1-1 system or a 3-1-1 center, which is a constituent relations management system. And in the current fiscal challenges that we've been facing over the last couple of years, we haven't been able to identify a way in which to fund the call center. And so the staff at the Department of Information Technology took the challenge and ultimately came up with the current system utilizing a web interface, which would be the first phase of a 3-1-1 system, which enables citizens to process their own work orders for services that might, that they would like to have city staff undertake. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brian Sims, who's really been a champion of putting this service together. And I apologize, Brian Sands.
We had another sound.
We did have Brian Sands. Brian Sands, and he is the one that's championed putting this service together. And give you a quick demonstration of the system. And this is online today, and so the public can actually go online and submit their own requests for the city to process. And then ultimately, they'll get a response like you would on Amazon.com or other websites that give you an email status of where the, the status of their request is and ultimately a response when that's been completed. With that, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. As the city manager has indicated, we're pleased to be here tonight to show you the new Citizen Service Center. The system actually went live kind of quietly at the end of February so we could kind of work out the kinks with the public. It's been available on the website since that time. And tonight marks kind of the launch, tonight and tomorrow, where we'll be starting to publicize this for the public. I want to walk you through a little bit of kind of where we are in the process of deploying the system and where we're going next, and then we'll give you a brief demo of how the system works. So first, Phase One, back in March, we launched the web-based self-service component of the system. This consists of a knowledge base and service requests. Knowledge base allows a user to go to the website and type in a particular term they might be looking for, abandoned vehicle, graffiti, those types of things. And it will come back with information about how the city handles and processes requests like that, and will lead them to information on the website that they may need. Service requests are when we need to go a step further, when it involves engaging city departments and having them follow up, whether it's to remove graffiti or to tow an abandoned vehicle, that type of thing. This actually will let people put in their email address, submit the request, it gets routed to the appropriate department, and then they will communicate back with the customer electronically while they're sending field crews out to do the work. The second phase that we plan to do in May is to encourage city staff to begin using this web-based interface in their own work as they take telephone calls from their customers in their individual departments. They'll start putting their calls into the system so that we begin to amass them together and use the same system to dole them out to the various departments. And the third phase, where the date has not yet been determined, is to develop a actual call center where we would allow people to call in to a centralized location where operators would be able to take the requests from the public and enter them directly into the system. It's envisioned that in that call center model, the staff would be able to use the knowledge base as well to help them answer the requests and the informational items that are coming in from the public and maybe answer some of those questions directly on the telephone. Not everything will lead to an actual service request, but if a service request is necessary, they'll be able to submit it at that time. The project team is involved, the Department of Information Technology, as the city manager mentioned, as well as participation from all city departments. We worked with each city department to look at what their kind of top 25 calls and interactions with the public have been over the years so that we could develop knowledge-based solutions for each of those. And those are what we've deployed into the system at this point. And that's an ongoing piece where we'll have to have, we'll continue to iterate that process and put additional information into the database, and it'll grow over time. As far as the rollout, this Phase One, as I mentioned, we did a soft launch actually on March 7th. We announced the system during, in the city manager's newsletter on March 10th, doing the council demo tonight. Tomorrow, a public press release will go out from the Public Affairs Office. And for council members, just so that you know, we're on schedule to do a demo for your field reps at the end of this month so that they're aware of how the system works and can work with your constituents. On the city homepage, you'll recognize this picture. You'll see down here at the bottom, this Citizen Service button. It will move around each time you load the website. It may be on the left or it may be on the right because that's a dynamic display. But that's kind of the primary area that engages our customers, and they'll see that that's how they can go into the system from that particular point. There'll be many other locations throughout the website that, when it's appropriate, it will encourage the user to use the Citizen Service Center, and they'll go from there. So now let me take you through an actual demo of how the system works. As I mentioned before, there are two ways to use the system, searching the knowledge base and submitting a service request. There are over 300 knowledge-based solutions that are in the system currently, all locally developed by us in Pasadena, that's not anything from the vendor. And then submitting a service request, and there are currently 30 of those that we're prepared to deal with. It's very easy to take requests, but you have to make sure that the bureaucracy is set up to be able to handle those requests and follow through on them. So there's 30 that we're prepared to deal with at this particular point, and expect that that'll grow as well. So I'm going to walk you through a demo here. And pause it from time to time if we want to talk about anything. This is what the main entry point screen looks like for the Citizen Service Center. You'll see an area where people can type in their search term for the knowledge base, a place over here on the right where they can search and track previous case numbers that they've submitted in the past. And then a little later, we'll go down to the bottom of the screen and we'll look at the various service requests. But in this demonstration, we're going to search something in the knowledge base. So, let's see, here we go. Searching graffiti and pressing the search command comes back with a knowledge-based article about how do I report graffiti? And then the actual knowledge-based solution appears here with both the question, I'll pause it here, the question and the answer that tells folks how the city handles graffiti issues. And you'll notice at the bottom, in this knowledge-based solution, there's a link right here to service requests. So they could launch directly from there and go in and report graffiti at the particular location that they may have encountered it. We have information over on the right that tells us how recently this issue was updated in the system, so we can tell that it's being kept up to date in the department that submitted the information, so we know who to go back to to validate it. I'll continue on with the demo. Here, we're choosing to do a service request, and we're going in and we're entering, we can either do by exact address or we can put in by intersection. We're going to choose to do by intersection. And we'll put in a street of Walnut and a cross-streak of Craig, and we'll click search. It will find that down here at the bottom, the intersection of East Walnut and North Craig Avenue. We select that and click next over on the right-hand side. And it will actually take us to a map, and it will pinpoint that yellow dot in the center of the screen indicates that location. But maybe that's just near where we saw the issue. We can drag that dot to specifically where maybe we saw that graffiti and leave it there, and it will reorient it to that particular address. And it takes us to another screen where it asks for a little bit more detail about the graffiti that we encountered. Is it on private or public property? And what kind of, what object is on? Then we'll fill out that information as much as we can. Some of it's required and some of it's optional. And then we'll click next and go to the next screen. And then it will ask us to put in our email address. If we want to, we can put in our email address and stay up to date. The city will keep that constituent up to date on what's going on. If you don't want to put your email address in, you can choose to be anonymous and just submit it that way, but of course, we have no way of getting back to you as far as the results of this. So that information is then sent on to the, to the department who starts working that particular ticket. So that's the knowledge base. Now let's quickly take a look at creating a service request, which is basically what we just did, although we did it from a knowledge-based article. Now we're going to search through the list of available service requests, which you may find interesting. Down here at the bottom of the screen, we'll scroll down a little bit, and we'll see a series of service requests, and I'll pause it here for just a second. You'll see things that relate to water and power, garbage and graffiti, streets and sidewalks, transportation, parks and trees, and the like. So those, these are the 30 that we were talking about earlier. We'll do abandoned vehicles, and this time we'll put in an exact address. And when we put in that address, 212 Craig, it will automatically look for that location in the city's database of addresses, finds a direct match. We select that match as being correct, and then we move on to the next screen, which plots it on the map again. And again, we could move that if we wanted to. In this case, we'll leave it at that particular address. We'll fill out the next screen that asks for some details about the make and model of the vehicle that we've seen that's abandoned. And then we'll click on the next button, which will submit this issue, or actually will ask us for our, for our email address. We'll type that in so that we can be notified. And then we'll click next, submitting the ticket to the city. And that information is then, we have a tracking number up here automatically that will come to the user in an email so they can follow up on it, and it indicates that your form has been submitted to the city. This is a copy of a typical email that the user would receive that indicates that, in the subject line, that it's coming from the city of Pasadena. It's confirmation of a service request. It thanks them for submitting the ticket, and it gives them a link that they can go back and follow up later so that they can find out the status of the, of the particular So essentially, those are the basic components of the system. That concludes the demo portion of this. The system, as I mentioned, is up and running. We've had about, during the quiet time, and we've not really publicized this, we've had about 66 service requests come in throughout the city, varying from tree trimming issues to graffiti issues to barking dogs. We're actually partnering with the Humane Society to take in issues through this system and dole them out to the, to the folks in the Humane Society who follow up on that for us. So the system's working quite well. We expect it to ramp up now after tonight as we've kind of publicly raised the issue and we start getting the press attention on this. But so far, things are working quite well. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Senator, real quickly, in conclusion, one, I submitted about 40 over the weekend, so we're looking forward to see how the system works. One of the key elements of this is that it enables the tracking of the system, not only for the constituent, but also for staff and for management. And so we actually will be looking to make sure that we meet our objectives as it relates to timeframe. So for instance, a pothole with an internal policy says that it needs to be resolved within 48 hours, and so we get to determine whether or not we're meeting those objectives. So we're looking forward to seeing this come to fruition.
Margaret?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to commend the city manager for bringing this forward because through all of our budget discussions, we talk about how our city government doesn't have to provide less service, but we have to become more efficient at providing, at delivering the services that we do provide. And I think this, especially as it goes through certain iterations and people become more comfortable using it, and it gives people a chance to work directly and interface directly with our city government and receive that response. And, you know, in today's society, we're all kind of doing it ourselves and learning how to, you know, not wait for someone else to report it. So easy to report things now. So I think this is a great idea and really glad you're able to roll this out, even though it isn't 100% of the project you want to roll out. And just looking forward to getting a report back on how it's working and sort of the type of, the type of requests that you're receiving, you know, where they fall in terms of which departments, public works, water. And then I'm sure you'll have lots of ideas on how to expand this and make it more usable for our residents. So I think it's great. Thanks.
If there are no other questions or comments now, perhaps we should signal Brian and the city manager that in some time in the future, six months or something, it would be nice to have a brief update as to how the system is working, how many hits have come in and so on, that would give us, allow us to keep, keep aware of how this new resource, which as council member McAllister points out, is cost-effective, is serving the needs of If there's nothing more, we'll consider that report complete. We do have a 7:30 hearing, which is expected to require perhaps 10 or 15 minutes. It's not quite time for that yet, so let's turn to the consent calendar.
Sorry, this one came in last time.
Which one?
The 13.
I see. I've been, just handed a card from Michelle White, who would like to comment on the matter that we've just wrapped up. Michelle?
I had a question about the police department. One of the concerns that had been raised by groups was that if you filed a complaint on the web, that you didn't have a copy of it and there was no way to track it once it was filed. I'm wondering whether the police department is included in this, this process.
They are included in this process, but the, but the actual request, in this case, doesn't enable you to file a complaint against the department through this service, but it will provide you a link ultimately to the department page that allows you to download the form.
Okay, is there a way through the link to get either a receipt or a way to track what's happening with the complaint?
Probably the best solution, let's see if we can figure out a way to incorporate the complaints in this process and see if we can make that work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Turning to the consent calendar, is there a motion to approve? Been moved and seconded. Any objection? There being none, the consent calendar is approved. Let's defer item three. Let's go to items six, seven, and 11. Let's go to items six, seven, and 11. Is there a motion to approve the resignations and the ratification of the nomination? Been moved and seconded, that item six, seven, and 11 be approved by this council? Any objections? There being none, action is approved. Let's go to second reading of ordinances, item 12. An ordinance of the city of Pasadena amending section 10.52.010 of the code designating portions of Sierra Madre Boulevard as a truck route. Do we have indication as to who introduced this at first reading? Mr. Haderlein introduced this ordinance at last meeting. Turning to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Haderlein?
In favor.
Councilmember Holborn?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember McTooneck?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
Mayor Bogard?
Yes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Let's turn to item three. Pasadena Support of the Transportation for America Federal Transportation Legislative Platform. This is a comprehensive program for support from the federal government to do thoughtful and sensible things and to provide funding for future transportation and transit projects. Mr. Doc, the director of the Department of Transportation, is here to maybe introduce this matter or make a brief presentation as to what's involved. It does come to the council with the recommendation, the unanimous recommendation of the Legislative Policy Committee adopted on March 29. If I'm not mistaken, there were two, not three, members of the committee present. And maybe we can be, the record can be made clear on that in the course of the staff
Councilmembers, I'm, in the interest of time, I'm going to ask our Transportation Administrator, Mark Yammarone, to deliver the, a brief presentation for us on the item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city was approached by Transportation for America, which is a broad and growing coalition of national, state, and local organizations. They approached us for support in their platform, which they will be forwarding as part of the federal reauthorization legislation. And a representative from that organization did attend the Legislative Policy Committee meeting back in February. At that point, they, the Leg Policy Committee asked staff to, to review their platform and to come back with a recommendation. The Transportation for America platform is based on, on six principles. When staff reviewed those, they are all consistent with the principles of both our sustainable, our Green City Action Plan, as well as our general plan of land use and mobility elements. And staff does recommend support for this platform. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions from Mr. Robinson?
The staff recommendation.
Second. Mr. Haderlein, did you lean forward?
Preparing to vote.
If there are no questions, any objections, that matter is unanimously approved. It's now 7:30 and a public hearing is scheduled to consider approval and submittal of the Public Housing Agency Annual Plan for 2011 to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the first step is for a city clerk acting in a capacity as secretary to the Community Development Commission to report on the publication of a public hearing notice and any correspondence received.
Thank you, Mayor. On January 24, 2011, the public hearing notice was published in the Pasadena Star News. And on January 27, 2011, the notice was published in the Pasadena Journal. One letter of support stating some concerns was received by the city clerk's office and distributed to the city council.
Next, we move to our staff for a presentation as to the issues involved and the information that is available to us. And that will be presented by the Director of Housing, William Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The 2011 PHA Annual Plan is a plan that outlines the operations, the program participants, the rental assistance programs, and the services for the upcoming year. Some changes, this is, this is an annual report that is required by HUD. And some changes from the 2010 plan are, in Attachment H, there are some minor changes that were made because of new CFRs. And then there are two new sections, Chapter 14, Section F, which is a plan in the event that HUD funding gets substantially cut. And then there is Chapter 25, which deals with non-elderly disabled vouchers, which are new vouchers that we were awarded this last year. So they have to get incorporated into the new plan. With respect to Section 14, Chapter 14, Section F, the plan for insufficient funding, this is really a contingency plan. We're not planning to, to terminate households, but in the very worst case, it does give PCDC the ability to terminate households from the program. This is, this is not what we're planning to do. Obviously, we're in the business of housing families, not terminating them. But it is allowed by the HUD regulations. It's relatively common in PHA annual plans. And it would only take effect if HUD dramatically cuts the funding. And why we think it's important to include this contingency plan is that if we don't include it and then HUD funding is cut mid-year, we would have to seek a mid-year approval from HUD, which could be months and months and months. And in which case, then we'd have no way to absorb any cost overrun. So this is really a contingency plan. With respect to Chapter 25, there, these are new vouchers that PCDC was awarded. These are for the disabled, non-elderly disabled. And there's two categories, two types. We were awarded 50 vouchers for Category 1, which really is to house those non-elderly disabled who are already on our waiting list. And then Category 2, we received 40 of these vouchers, and they are for non-elderly disabled who are in institutions but who are capable of living independently. And so there are a number of, this is, this is an issue that HUD is trying to address, that there are a number of individuals who are able to live independently, but they are in institutions, they may have been discharged from a hospital with no other place to go, their health is rehabbed, and yet they cannot afford to live anyplace else, to, to leave the institution. Because they can have their housing costs covered while they're in the institution, but they don't need to be there. So obviously, it costs a lot more to house somebody, to subsidize someone to be in an institution as opposed to be in an independent apartment. So we received 40 of these vouchers. And there were no other housing authorities in Los Angeles County to receive either of these vouchers. And there were only four housing authorities in the entire nation that received both of these vouchers. So we're pretty pleased that we were, we were able to receive these vouchers. We did receive public comments, and I believe they were distributed in your packet. And there were 26 suggestions that were received from Section 8 property owner, who is a nonprofit organization called Affordable Housing Services. And this, Michelle White is the executive director. And staff met with, with Affordable Housing Services and went through each item. And here's kind of a summary, that 12 we agreed to, we, we agreed to do and/or it was withdrawn because it was information that was already in the report. Three, we agreed, we agreed to that we would be investigating, but they would not be for inclusion in the plan. There are things like improving disabled accessibility to our building, which is a matter that we could take up with a landlord, I mean, to the, to the common spaces of our building. So we'd take that up with the landlord. There was one item to be investigated for inclusion, possible inclusion into next year's plan. And there was one item that is more appropriate and would be included in an upcoming report that, that we're having prepared called an analysis to impediments to housing. And then there were four items that we disagreed with because they were either clearly allowed or disallowed by the HUD regulations. For instance, the suggestion that we be allowed to adjust our rental payments, you know, payment standard. We're at the minimum standard already and HUD allows you to go below those standards, but you have to meet certain criteria, which we don't meet. So we just can't do that. And then there were three items that we disagreed with in terms of bearing the responsibility because there are already third parties that are providing these responsibilities, such as fair housing, such as making determinations of whether somebody is disabled or not, that we didn't feel that, that PCDC should take that responsibility on. And then two, that we disagreed with because we felt they have a negative, would have a negative impact on clients, potential negative impact on clients. And that's it. Any questions?
Are there questions from members of the council for Mr. Wong? No request has been received for public comment on this hearing. Obviously, a lot of work has gone on leading up to tonight, including outreach and interaction with the public. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
We had a very quick turnaround on this and the staff were so helpful in coming to meet on basically the day, the day off Friday, or I don't know what, how you, the Friday that they're normally off and, or not meeting with the public. And we were able to resolve a lot of things and it was very helpful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, can I just ask if, Michelle, do you agree with Bill's summary of the meeting? Thank you very much. And we have a letter in front of us dated April 8, 2011.
Today.
April 8?
Oh.
2014.
Oh.
So you're also a psychic, Michelle, and addition all of your other bills. But can we ask if this be made part of the record? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to close the hearing? No objection, the hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the council? The staff recommendation makes a finding with respect to CECL, that it is not applicable herein. It's, there's an exemption and that the plan as described by Mr. Wong be approved. Ms. McAllister?
I move the staff recommendation, but I also want to recognize and commend Mr. Wong and his department for obtaining those two grants for non-elderly disabled persons who are a very important component in the continuum, continuum of housing needs and I think often overlooks. So congratulations for that. And we, I think I speak for the council when I say we appreciate the hard work that you've done.
Thank you very much.
And with that, Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
It's been moved and seconded. The staff recommendation. Further questions? Are there any objections? There being none, that matter is unanimously approved. Thank you, Bill, for your hard work on that.
Mayor, I know the tobacco piece is very important and we have a number of speakers. I think the public art piece is relatively straightforward. If we could, if I could suggest perhaps we could do that now.
I understood it was not going to be lengthy presentation because of the work that has been done by the community-based advisory panel. Shall we take that up now?
One o'clock and I'm not sure how long the smoking issue would go, such that we, you know, if the art exhibit, given the choice between the two, I'd rather be here for the smoking.
We have about 20 cards at the moment and that could prompt us to consider whether three minutes is the right limit on speaking to us tonight or whether some lower amount of time should be allocated. But...
It was that same, same factor that caused me to maybe want to get the public arts piece out of the way. But I can't imagine it'll be three hours on the tobacco, even with 20 comments.
Famous last words.
No, that's, that's fine. I just jinxed it.
Let us, let us turn to item 14. This is a matter that has been conducted under the direction of a senior member of our staff, Rochelle Branch, is within the jurisdiction of the planning department, rotating public art exhibition program recommendations as formulated by a selection panel. I think everyone will remember that the council approved a citywide temporary public art exhibition program six months ago. And the next step in implementing that plan or policy was to identify certain individual pieces of art and then have a selection process that was community-based. The advantage of this new initiative at City Hall is that not only will public art in the future be associated with significant new projects where a set aside for public art is required for projects of a certain size, but not only will public art be available in the downtown area as part of the city's promotion of public art, but public art will be available in every district of the city under an expanded concept on the part of City Hall for the edification of our community and the display of public art. I think that's a correct statement, although brief, of the background of this program. And we turn maybe to Vince Bertoni to kick this off tonight.
Thank you. And given the, your agenda tonight, I'll just turn it over to Rochelle Branch, our cultural affairs manager, will give you a more of an abbreviated staff report on that.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council members, staff. Mayor did an excellent job in giving background about this project. This was approved by council last year and it's intended to enlighten the city by placing artwork in every district. We had an extensive outreach process to artists as well as residents. We had several community meetings to reach out to the community, to let residents know what they might expect in their neighborhoods, and also for artists who might be interested in proposing for the program. The staff report includes some details about that outreach process. I will note that when we, when we decided to create the selection panel, we were very, very pleased to be able to receive recommendations from council members, from, for community members to serve representing each council, council district in the selection of artwork. The program has two components. I'm not doing a good job moving forward, sorry. There you go. The program has two components, a rotating exhibition of loaned artworks and a selection of site-specific works where artists will come to each specific site and create actual works specifically for those locations. In all, we'll have nine sites throughout, throughout the city. We will have six sites for the loan work and three for site-specific. The program will be introduced in phases. We have three phases from June through December of this year, about four, three to four works each. And we will be beginning in the northwest and east areas of the city. Very briefly, and because I realize you have a, a long agenda tonight, we did have a request for proposals. We received 29 responses. And we had a wide outreach, I'm not speaking loud enough. We received 29 responses, and we had a wide outreach, I'm not speaking loud enough, wide outreach, it's not on. Okay. We had a broad outreach program to reach artists as well as residents. We incorporated mailing lists and tried to reach as many people as possible, and we had, I think, all in all, with several thousand names that we sent information to about the program and the opportunity to submit artwork. So, the artwork selection process. The panel was comprised of community representatives from every council district, as well as three public art professions. We also had staff on board to answer any questions about accessibility disability issues, as well as sustainability issues. Artists selected to develop site-specific projects included consideration of their past work and review of the proposal concepts. They will need to return, all of these artworks will be selected, that were recommended for selection, will be presented to the Arts and Culture Commission next week, and the site-specific artists will need to return to the commission at some point in the future to be able to have final concepts reviewed. This is just initial concepts tonight. Here's a review of the sites again. We have nine sites in total. Again, the Arts and Culture, the Arts and Culture Review will be the April 13th, and we'll have final review of the site-specific projects from June through July. And now I'd like to show you some images of the selected artwork. We will be showing you some of the sites, photographs of the sites, and then showing you actual photographs of the selected works. So we'll begin. The first site is Washington and Glen in Council District Number One. And this is the artwork selected. I'd be happy to provide more information about titles and artists. The artist is John Seaman, sculptural work, Council District Number Two. This is Walnut and Foothill Location. This is a site of a site-specific work that will be proposed by two artists, Margaret Lozari and Lauren Evans. One is a sculptor and one is a visual artist, and they will present their concept which deals with tradition of lush imagery and beautiful gardens in Pasadena. Their artwork will consist of steel mesh-framed folding screens that vary in height, that accentuate vehicular experience, and relate to Japanese-American cultural history in Pasadena. The next... I'm sorry.
This is where I started to get confused. So these images are representative of their work, but this is not specifically what's being proposed for the location?
No, they just proposed a concept, and so they'll need to further, work with staff to further develop that concept and then re-present. And so the images in your packet of the site-specific works are images that are representative of the individual artist's passport. Exactly.
Okay.
The next site is 200 East Washington at Moringo. And the work that was selected there is by LT Mustard Seed. It's a hummingbird. The next location is Sunset and Mountain, Council District Three. And the work that was selected is by artist Daniel Stern. Am I doing wrong? Don't get towards me, I thought I was doing, I'm sorry. I'm going the exact opposite way, I'm so sorry. Help. I needed to go back.
You want to go back?
Yes, back. Keep going. District Three, keep going. One more. There you go, thank you. Okay. This is artist Daniel Stern, so Council District Three, Sunset and Mountain. It's a sculpture that is to be related, stood up on a platform. Okay, the next site is Sierra Madre Boulevard. I need help. I'm so sorry, I'm having difficulty getting this. Ah, okay. Sierra Madre Boulevard, between Riviera and New York, Council District Four. Artist Cecilia Loza. Three standing sculptures. The next location is Catalina and Union, Council District Five. And the selected artwork is Christine Beniston, topiaries, sculptures. The next site is 1199 South Fair Oaks in Council District Six. And this is for a site-specific work entitled "City Speaks," which brings together spoken word and visual artists from the Pasadena community. The goal of the project is to convert an otherwise functional object that appears to be a piece of city infrastructure, such as pipes coming out of the sidewalk, into an interesting artistic experience, and this is, this project does have a sound component that will be developed. I am clearly not excelling at... Is that where I'm going to be? I can't see. One more back. This is not the night to do this. One more back. Thank you. Bonnie Avenue Parkway in Del Mar, Council District Seven. And this is a, another site-specific, oops, go back, I want this one. Go back, one more, right there. This is a site-specific proposal. The artist proposes the creation of a physical platform which, on which ones can be arranged to refer to the historical architecture of Pasadena. And this project also will have a sound component with poetic voices. The next site is South Lake at Lakewood Place, Council District Number Seven. And this is a sculpture by Brian Carlson. We do have images of alternate artworks, which I'm happy to show you if there's time permitting, and if not, you can let me know.
First amendment issue here. Are there questions from members of the council regarding the presentation that has been This is a new program. Obviously, everyone is working hard to deliver something special and new to the community. One of the sources of comfort to those who are possibly uncomfortable with any one of the pieces, or more than one of the pieces that they've seen tonight, this is a rotating art exhibit, and it doesn't require a permanent commitment on the part of the council or
Mayor, so I understand, Rochelle, the installations will actually start appearing this summer, the first phase, June through August.
That's correct.
And the rest of them will roll out during the balance of the calendar year.
That's right, yes, exactly.
Very enthusiastic about the program and look forward to seeing these sprout around the city.
Thank you, council member.
Any other questions before we...
I appreciate the fact that this is a rotating, if you will, exhibition. I think it will make things interesting, and I look forward to more of these.
If there are no other questions tonight, we will thank you, Rochelle, for your presentation and for all the work that this presentation represents in recent months, and express the hope that it goes not only well, but even better than the expectations of those who are excited about edifying our community with modern art, which includes all of us around the dais.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say thank you to all the community members who participated. We really enjoyed your input, and we hope to continue to find a way to engage you in the future.
That allows us then to move forward in the agenda tonight to item four, which is proposed municipal code in the news to reduce drifting tobacco smoke in multi-unit housing. Pasadena has a long record of leadership in regard to the regulation of smoking based on a recognition of the health impacts of secondary smoke. And this represents a proposed major additional element of regulation that has been the subject of study by our staff, the Pasadena Public Health Department, and by the Council Committee on Public Safety. Shall we first turn to the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Steve Hederlein.
Thank you, Mayor.
This was at the Public Safety Committee, in fact, several times it was at the Public Safety Committee, though I must admit I was not president at, present at the final appearance at the Public Safety Committee. So if we're looking for a report from the Public Safety Committee on the recommendation from that committee, I may have to defer to my colleagues who were, who were actually at the meeting. But yes, it was at the Public Safety Committee, in fact, several times. We heard many different versions of this, but as to the recommendation from the committee, I may turn to my colleagues on that.
Now Steve's leadership, we couldn't come up with a recommendation, Mayor, and only partly joking. It's a complex subject, as we're going to hear, and the decision of our committee, of the three members that were present, was to send this on to the full discussion with the council. We had some questions both that afternoon and for tonight, and so it comes here without a recommendation one way or the other, but rather they're looking forward to a discussion.
We turn then to Dr. Wallace, head of the Pasadena Public Health Department, for a presentation as to what is, what makes up the proposal that is before us tonight, sir.
Okay. We thank the council for hearing this, and we're kind of really excited to have this discussion. I think this is clearly one of the advantages of being one of the three cities in the state that has its own health department. We can really have meaningful dialogue around crucial issues like this. We want to just start by talking, I will give a little bit of background in terms of a timeline as to what is going on around this issue. In May of 2008, City Council directed staff to research issues related to drifting tobacco smoke in multi-unit housing, and to return with information on the problem. March of 2010, following the multi-unit housing informational report presented, the Public Safety Committee directed staff to come back with recommendations to address the problem. In this year, February and March, the Public Safety Committee heard comments from the public, as well as a report from staff, and voted to move the issue to the full council for discussion without recommendation. Staff gathered and researched for later information on, one, the health impacts, two, existing state and city codes, three, other communities with ordinances, and four, input from the community itself. Along those lines, we want to mention that over the last 20 years, the city has developed and enacted tobacco control policies, reducing youth access to tobacco and public, and the public's exposure to harmful secondhand smoke. In 2008, City Council adopted a comprehensive policy to prohibit smoking in certain outdoor areas, and those include 20 feet from business entryways, and outdoor dining areas, and outdoor shopping malls, and in other designated outdoor public spaces. There are protections from exposure to secondhand smoke where people work, eat, and play. However, many are suffering from being exposed to harmful drifting tobacco smoke where they live. So we're going to give you a little bit of background into the science as to why we made the recommendations. The 2010 Surgeon General's report states, "There is no safe level of exposure. Inhaling the complex chemical mixture of combustion compounds in tobacco smoke causes adverse health outcomes, particularly cancer, cardiovascular, and pulmonary disease, through mechanisms including DNA damage, inflammation, and oxidative stress." There are more, there are more than 200, 200 scientific research and peer-reviewed articles documenting the dangers of secondhand smoke. Approximately 20-plus studies are specific to multi-unit housing have shown that tobacco smoke drifts from neighboring units, vents, patios, balconies, open windows, doors, light fixtures, and plumbing. Three articles are referenced on this page. Probably one of the most impressive is the second, which is from the Journal of Pediatrics, one of the most trusted journals in the medical field in regards to pediatric medicine, and it speaks to the fact that the cotinine levels in children exposed to secondhand, in apartments where nobody smokes in their unit, meaning their parents don't smoke, have higher levels of cotinine in their blood than those children who live in house, single-family households where nobody smokes. The last is a really good review article that we'll reference as we go through, speaking to the idea of regulation of smoking in public housing that was published in the premier medical journal in the United States, the New England Journal of Medicine. Statewide, most multi-unit housing policies, 34 prohibit smoking in common areas, and 13 site cities slash counties have ordinances that prohibit smoking within a certain percentage of units. And that would just give you some background on what other California communities are doing. Compliance times for landlords to do, to follow through on the ordinances range from 90 days to five years. Recently, the Los Angeles City Council directed city attorney to prepare an ordinance to address smoking in certain outdoor areas and in common areas of apartment buildings. The most comprehensive ordinances designating 100% smoke-free multi-unit housing are Richmond and South Pasadena. South Pasadena has 100% of units to be nonsmoking by September 4 of 2013. Richmond, California, has 100% of units to be nonsmoking, and it went into effect on January 1 of 2011. Belmont, California, 100% of units to be nonsmoking, but allows a 14-month grace period for current cigarette smokers. Sebastopol, 100% of units to be nonsmoking by November 2 of 2011. Most recently adopted policies within the last 90 days include Union City, California, and the entire county of Santa Clara. They will each require 100% of units to be 100% nonsmoking. We did two community surveys, looking at local opinion polls, to find out what the residents of Pasadena thought on this issue, and specifically in the manner in which this information was collected, we sought to do two things. First, we really wanted to make sure that we caught the information, got information from those individuals who actually live in multi-unit housing. And secondly, we did something that you'll see interesting, that we actually oversampled for smokers, meaning that in Pasadena and Los Angeles County, smoking rates are somewhere between 10 and 12% of the populace. We actually sampled much higher to make sure that what we present to you today is really statistically significant and powerful if we were to run an epidemiological analysis. Seventy, in 2008, when 900 residents were polled, 77% support policy to prohibit smoking in outdoor common areas. 63% support a policy to prohibit smoking... 63% support a policy to prohibit smoking inside residential units, to prohibit smoking on residential balconies and patios. In 2009, 114 respondents, 79% wanted to be protected from smoke entering their homes. 75% would prefer to live in a non-smoking section of the building, with 72% wanting to live in a completely non-smoking building. 80% were in favor of the law requiring some units to be non-smoking, with 74% stating it should be applicable to new and existing buildings. Staff also conducted outreach sessions with more than 14 relevant multi-unit housing groups during late spring, early summer of 2010 to obtain input on initially proposed multi-unit housing smoking restrictions. And the groups include Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, the California Apartment Association, Foothill Apartment Association, Pasadena Chamber of Commerce, the Pasadena Housing Practitioners Advisory Board Meeting, and the Pasadena Neighborhood Coalition. Overall, health and economic benefits in addressing drifting tobacco smoke in multi-unit housing, again, based on best practices or evidence in the literature. We start with the first bullet, reduces level of tobacco exposure markers in non-smokers, especially lowering risks among infants, children, from middle air infections, premature births, low birth weight babies, sudden infant death syndrome, and other diseases. There are more than 250 poisonous ingredients identified in tobacco smoke, 11 of which are Class A carcinogens. A Class A carcinogen is something like asbestos, that we have overwhelming evidence and proof causes cancer in humans. Epidemiologic studies show involuntary exposure to tobacco smoke is linked to increased cancer risks, heart disease, pulmonary disease, asthma attacks, and sudden infant death syndrome. In fact, there are almost 50,000 deaths every year in the United States related to secondhand smoke intake, the majority of which are cardiovascular disease, heart attacks and strokes, with about 4,600 of those being cancer cases. No smoking policies in homes, housing also encourages smoking cessation in those who smoke. We'll talk about that a little more in a second, but that's one of the things that research shows, that when these policies are enacted, current smokers want to quit, try to quit smoking. In fact, the literature also shows that almost 70% of all smokers would like to quit. It discourages initiation of smoking by youth. There are also three or four very good articles that show that adolescents in these situations where smoking is banned in multi-unit housing are less likely to start smoking. There's also the idea of reduced fire hazards. It reduces insurance premiums for landlords and owners and offers faster turnaround of smoke-free units. It reflects California, Los Angeles County, and local non-smoking rates and community trends. So we want to go through the recommendations one by one and a little bit of the rationale as to each one. The first is to specifically define secondhand smoke as a public nuisance under Pasadena Municipal Code Section 8.04.020P and subject to an administrative penalty pursuant to Pasadena Municipal Code Chapters 1.25 and 1.26. This is slightly different from what is in the staff report, but this speaks to, actually often this as a civil, as defined here, a California Civil Code defines a nuisance as anything harmful to health or indecent or offensive to the senses as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property. The term nuisance already exists in the Pasadena Municipal Code, Section 8.04.020P under the general nuisance provision. It defines nuisance as any accumulation of rubbish, filth, garbage, liquid, waste, dust, smoke, fumes, to be offensive to the senses of the public or detrimental to public health. The second recommendation is to prohibit tobacco smoking on patios and balconies and in outdoor common areas of multi-unit housing. We recommend this because it would establish a non-smoking buffer zones around the building, which would minimize and control unwanted exposure to harmful drifting tobacco smoke in all multi-unit housing. Minimizes drifting tobacco smoke exposure, especially to children and youth in common areas, such as pool areas, courtyards, laundry areas, et cetera. This one is important because if people want to open their windows and, for example, not pay as much for electricity or other things, making sure that right around the building is smoke-free is critical for them to not have to breathe in tobacco smoke. The third recommendation is to require disclosure of the ordinance requirements to all prospective and existing tenants and buyers in rental, lease, and purchase agreements by January 2012. Most people want to be compliant with existing laws. Disclosure provides communication to existing and potential tenants and owners of the ordinance to ensure no smoking provisions are clearly stated. Other California communities have incorporated disclosure language into their multi-unit housing notification and implementation process. The analogy we like to use for this is the rationale for speed signs on long abandoned highways, because we know that a majority of people, when they see the speeding, the sign, would comply to the law. And so one of the things we want to do is make sure everybody understands what is required of them in advance. The fourth recommendation is to establish phase-in period for 100% smoke-free multi-unit housing by 2014. It provides sufficient staff time to educate and provide technical assistance to landlords and owners. It allows owners and landlords ample time to implement recommendations as part of a multi-year phase-in plan. The final phase of this specific recommendation will allow time for industry trends to reflect current smoking status, non-smoking status, and patterns while still addressing current issues of impacted residents. And this one is also very clearly based on the scientific evidence of the dangers of second and even thirdhand smoke on individuals who are not in a position to make complaints. Once you've really reviewed the scientific literature, you really understand that even when people don't know enough about what's drifting into their apartment to make a complaint, in fact, they can be adversely affected by the tobacco smoke. The big issue here, enforcement, which speaks to the fact that the public health department would be doing the enforcement. It is anticipated these costs can be absorbed within the current operating budget, as we'll describe in a second. However, based on actual implementation, adjustments may be needed to ensure successful implementation. Staff estimates that the enforcement costs of both phase-in of program implementation and monitoring is approximately $58,000 annually. This includes $8,000 for implementation costs, such as materials and other administrative costs related to signage and mailing notification. Ongoing funding of approximately $30,000 is from tobacco retail licensing fees that the city already collects and which is designated for enforcement use. It can't be used for any other money, for any other reason. It is recommended that this be applied to cover one-half of an FTE of someone whose job would be to be the city's enforcer in the area of tobacco and tobacco smoke and all the other complaints that would come in. This $58,000 actually does represent the fact that there is some money left over to be added to the fact that there's about $33,000 collected a year. And so there's, would be ongoing revenue and actually, fortunately, because there's rollover money, there would actually be initial money available to help start the process.
Can I ask a clarification? So would the net be $28,000 from your budget?
No, in fact, that $28,000...
[inaudible]
No, the $28,000 right that you see here is actually roll-forward money. So it's money that we already have in an account that is not being used right now for enforcement. That money would roll forward and we'd be able to use that pot of money to do some of the things that we need to do at startup. If the council decides to go in this manner, we would want to provide signage, you know, all kinds of advice, support for all of the different landlords and owners in the city. And that initial money would come out of the reserve money that we already have. Going forward, annually, we would collect still around $30,000 or $33,000, and that would fund the person who would actually handle the enforcement.
Thank you.
So this is the stratagem by which we would implement the enforcement. So we would implement, and before there are any, or as we are rolling forward, one of the things we would do, of course, is outreach to property owners, landlords. We would distribute signage and materials. This is where that extra money would actually be spent. A complaint would come in, there would be an investigation, a notification letter would be sent out, a citation would be given, which would include a dollar amount to be paid. And what we're looking at doing actually is having it be an administrative hearing, exactly or similar to what we already do with transportation and with code compliance. An administrative hearing, I think, would leave us with an advantage. As a physician, I am, I would be overseeing these administrative hearings and I've been trained in nicotine cessation programs at Loma Linda University Veterans Hospital. And we could actually make this not a punitive process, but in fact, we would do something more akin to what the drug courts are designed to be. We could actually help people with the process of either quitting smoking if they want to or empowering them to find ways to smoke so that their neighbors are not impacted. The proposed recommendations reflect input from impacted relevant multi-unit housing entities and community members in order to take a comprehensive approach to address and reduce harmful drifting tobacco smoke or secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing. Adoption of the staff recommendations would bring Pasadena more in line with over 30 other California communities. It would also bring about more consistent practices with the nearby communities of Burbank, Glendale, and South Pasadena, which have already addressed this growing issue through city legislation. And I'll leave up, for our last slide, I won't go back through the recommendations, but I'll leave all four recommendations up. So during the discussion, if someone wants to refer to them, they are on the screen. Thank you.
Mr. Hederlein?
One quick question, just to clarify. It says that, well, the proposal is to define secondhand smoke as a public nuisance. Currently, what is secondhand smoke defined as?
Early, it's not defined as anything in a specific sense. I mean, you could argue that the fact that smoke is in the nuisance orders in the code already, could be argued that it's already there, but specifically, nicotine, tobacco smoke is not there.
And maybe a more, you know, broader question either for yourself or the city attorney, that if something is defined as a public nuisance, whether it's, you know, noise or whatever that nuisance is, does defining this, defining secondhand smoke as a public nuisance, create a scenario where secondhand smoke is, in effect, banned throughout the whole city? Because I can't imagine you, we would have a scenario where there would be parts of town where, or areas where public nuisances would be allowed?
For instance, noise is a public nuisance. However, in certain circumstances, the noise at 40 decibel is something that's enforceable as a nuisance, whereas somewhere else, it blends with the ambient sound. So the response, if someone were to pursue that as a public nuisance in a place that's not part of something that's prohibited here, the defense basically would be, well, it's only a public nuisance in those settings where it's prohibited, for instance.
So this would be a public nuisance, but only in multi-unit housing?
That's how it would end up being enforced and implemented, because that's the intent of the legislation.
Is there a purpose to be served in declaring secondhand smoke to be a public nuisance, even if the council chooses not to proceed with other elements of the recommendation that is before us? For example, the smoke-free multi-unit housing standard that is suggested that be achieved by the year 2014?
There could be a benefit in making it clear in the event that either the city or an individual wanted to pursue a public nuisance action because someone was consistently emitting the secondhand smoke in a location. So that would be evidence of it existing as a public nuisance, whereas if you didn't have it in there, you perhaps still would be able to try to offer that, but this would give a better support for a finding of a nuisance.
Mr. Madison?
I was actually thinking, looking at the survey, kind of the opposite question, which is, it seems like there are a lot of cities that implement the restrictions but don't take the extra step of declaring public nuisance. Is that fair to say? And so that was sort of a different spin on that same question. You could still have the restrictions in terms of the multi-unit housing, but not have the broader declaration.
Mr. Torni?
There's been a lot of discussion, we've all received a lot of emails, about the enforcement component of this. I just want to be sure I understand what is proposed. Do I understand that it would be enforced essentially on a complaint basis? I mean, what would generate an enforcement action in the proposal?
I would assume that, yes, predominantly, this would be a complaint-driven enforcement mechanism. And really, that's, I think initially, when council began to look at this, I think that's really what happened. I think there were complaints from the residents about this issue and looking at, well, how can we protect those individuals who don't want to be, you know, who don't want to breathe in the secondhand smoke of their neighbors? So I think in general, yes, it would be predominantly a complaint-driven.
So what showed in your little flow chart was that there would be a contact made and presumably some sort of investigation, and then ultimately it could lead to a hearing or a penalty or... But how, there was some confusion on exactly how the fact circumstances would be established. I mean, the enforcement official would contact, just explain to me how that would actually
Well, initially, what we would do is, we would have a situation where, let's say the complaint is generated. The complaint would come to the health department and our worker would go out. They would probably talk to the person who made the complaint first.
Right.
With that said, they would then try to probably speak to the person who they're asking to not smoke because it's affected their child or their elderly loved one. With that said, if the person is someone who is, you know, refusing to say, you know, I'm not going to stop smoking, the citation, a letter would go out first, a warning, a citation would be given, and that person could always take, you know, if they wanted to come and, you know, challenge the citation, like they do with traffic tickets, they could challenge it and they would come to an administrative hearing.
But how would the fact, what I'm trying to understand of the question that's been posed to me at least, is how would the fact circumstance, so someone has, my next-door neighbor files a complaint that I'm smoking and creating an unhealthful condition, you have a conversation with my neighbor, you try to contact me, I am unresponsible or I deny smoking. I've never smoked. This is just a neighbor versus neighbor thing and I don't know what that's about. So how does that official then establish the fact circum... In a noise complaint, it's a roll-up, it's either noisy or it's not. In a smoking complaint, how do the facts get established in terms of what happens next?
It would require potentially at least some investigation and we would need to rely on witness testimony if we don't rely, if, you know, if the health department representative goes out and smoke is coming out of the apartment, that's established. Other than that, it would have to be evidence that would be presented either from the complainant or from others who would have evidence of this occurring and the person who is charged would need to respond and the trier of fact would have to decide.
What the truth is.
Who to believe.
We have, there's an analogy, there's analogy in terms of the dog complaint thing and ordinance where the, there's people from the surrounding, the source of the complaint have to sign up.
And there would be a petition, which isn't something that's discussed here, but that doesn't mean...
I understand these details that would have to be defined. I'm just trying to understand how the, what the general outlook is in terms of establishing it.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McAston, you're next on the list of persons who want to speak.
Just, Dr. Wallace, going back to your example, one of the examples, I recall, we discussed at public safety had to do with, I mean, initially, I thought this was just applying to the open, the balconies and patios and open areas within multi-unit housing. But correct me if I'm wrong, when you, when we discussed this at public safety, you gave the example of a person smoking within the confines, within the indoors, interior of their private home unit, and the smoke is wafting through the HVAC system and the next-door neighbor smells it, complains, calls, somebody comes out, and you said then there's some sort of a meter or some sort of an indicator that you have that go, you would take into the complainer, complainants... would take into the complainant's house and try and measure the level of smoke coming from the next door?
Well, fortunately, that technology does exist. You can actually test to see if the remnants of tobacco smoke are around, partly because of the metal in tobacco smoke, chromium and other things. So you can actually test for it. And when I was really speaking to a public safety committee, I was asked about how we could, how we could do this. And I was just kind of really trying to mention the same thing we do with drunk drivers. Someone says they're not really drunk, we have them do a breathalyzer test or have them walk a straight line. So, and I don't mean that that's what we would do, but I mean, the technology assists us in trying to make the case. So, you know, we can do that. I think one of the things that we have to remember too is that, I don't know that, you know, I think a lot of people, as this, if this was to go forward, honestly, would comply. And I honestly think that this would be something, I mean, when you look at the numbers, even when you include an over sampling of smokers, even the smokers want non-smoking places to live. And there's a reason for that. So, you know, I know that, you know, the details of it, you know, I really have all the faith in the world in our city's attorney's department, and I think that if we, you know, if the city council decided to move in this fashion, I honestly think we could draft an ordinance that would be very fair and, you know, follow all of the necessary legal, you know, processes that it needs to, and would really, you know, make Pasadena a safer, cleaner place to live.
Well, thank you for that. But my question really goes back to, if there's a person in the interior of their unit smoking, because smoke is now a nuisance over the entire city, any person smoking within their home now could be subject to an action under this ordinance by a neighbor? So the public health department is going to come out and he's going to knock on the door, not of the person who's smoking, but of the next-door neighbor?
I think it would be wise to probably talk to the person who made the complaint first, yes.
Yeah, okay. And so then, he's going to come in and say, what? I don't smell it? I mean, what happens?
Well, I think, I think, and fairness to the person who's the victim, you know, let's say it's a child, let's say there's an asthmatic child in that house who's actually having increased, you know, occurrences where they're having asthmatic exacerbations and they're having to go to the hospital. I think it would be good to document that, to talk to them about the effects of the smoke in the house, so that when we discuss this with the neighbor. Again, this is not punitive, we're not trying to get people in trouble.
I appreciate that, and I understand the horrible effects of secondhand smoke, but I would like you to answer the question that, then, does that mean you're going to be going out there and basically providing information? You know, if you go in and the complainant says, look, my son has had this third, you know, asthma attack, I've had to take him down to urgent care three times this month because the guy next door is smoking? Then is that an informational campaign, you know, or what?
Well, I think, I'm assuming, I mean, I've only been in the city seven months, but I'm assuming if the neighbor's playing music really loud, that we'd knock on the door of the neighbor who's playing the music really loud, or was. I think it's also fair to talk to the person who the neighbor is accusing of doing the smoking and get their side of the story. And if, I mean, if the person, let's take the example that the person actually does smoke. I mean, are we asking, saying now that the person would lie and say that they don't smoke? Our assumption really is that if someone smokes and it's really affecting the health of their neighbor, our assumption on some level is that the person's going to honestly say, yes, I smoke. And that would be a part of this process. Now, obviously, everybody's not going to be that honest or ethical, but that's a part of the process.
But then, if that person, if that person in the unit is smoking, and he can't smoke on the inside of his unit, and he can't smoke on his patio, I mean, he's, he can't smoke anywhere in the city anymore?
That's actually.
What can he smoke?
Actually, he can smoke outside, he can, and one of the things that's suggested in the literature now is that as these ordinances move forward across the country, is that people actually go outside and smoke as they're moving, and walk in smoke at the same time, so that the smoke doesn't accumulate anywhere, and they're outside twenty feet away from a building. So that, that actually would leave you with a lot of space in Pasadena to smoke in.
Okay, so in that case, in that it was a condominium, he would have to go out until twenty feet away from the building?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gordo, Vice Mayor?
I've got, I've got some similar questions. I guess, you know, Dr. Walsh uses the example of loud music, and I'm just not, I'm not seeing the findings of fact that would be made in order to prosecute someone. I'm not seeing the standard that we would apply in order to move forward with a case against someone. And I think we need to be careful when we're legislating, like anytime we legislate, we need to be careful, but I think when we legislate around someone's home, particularly the interior of the home, we have to be, there's a heightened, we have to be all the more cautious. And I'm having a problem, because, I mean, I join my colleagues in saying that, you know, I understand the ill effects of secondhand smoke, but I'm just having a problem wrapping my arms around what the findings of fact would be. In the loud music situation, we send someone out, they do a decibel reading, and it is or it isn't. Either the decibels rise to the level of a municipal code violation or they don't. In this situation, I'm not sure what those findings that you or someone else would make, and I'm not sure that it's clear what the facts needed to be established would be to support that finding. That's what I'm not seeing here. And so, I don't take this lightly at all, because we are dealing with the confines of people's homes, and I'm just having a problem with it. I can, I can begin to see how we might treat the common areas and, you know, patios that are immediately adjacent to one another differently. But when we start talking about the interior of someone's home, I'm having a problem with that, because we can't just send someone over. And frankly, I'm not sure that it would be appropriate to send someone over and say, you know, we think you're smoking, and we have no way to prove it, but your neighbor says that you're the cause of their asthmatic child having problems, and we have absolutely no way to measure, no basis for it, other than a telephone call. So I think we should look at the issue of secondhand smoke separate from whether or not we want to enact a municipal code change that we have no way of proving, and no way of knowing whether or not it actually occurred inside someone's home. And then the third part of this is to look at the possibility of common areas, and whether we could take action as it was to common areas within buildings or patios that are immediately adjacent to common areas, or immediately adjacent to another patio or someone's front door. I think that's a little bit reasonable, and I think we could set up a process and set up facts or findings that could be made. But absent a standard, findings of fact that could be made to support a finding that someone's in violation, I'm going to have a real problem with this one. So I hope maybe some of the public speakers can address some of these issues, or, Doctor, maybe you can address some of these issues for me.
Let me just respond to a couple of things. The first one is if the person, the way you look at it, if the person turns off the music every time somebody comes out to the house, how would you prove that they had the loud music? You wouldn't be able to.
Well, not necessarily. If, you know, because the reading isn't taken from within the home of the offender, it's taken outside of the furloughs of the home of the offender and the neighboring, in the complainant's home, and therefore, the, it's unlikely that the offender would be aware that that measure, the sound is being measured, for them to know to turn it off. But if the case that I've had, you know, in my time on the council, when someone goes out to measure, the offender is not aware, because they usually do it continuously, you know, this is not a one-time thing, and someone's out there to measure when they're offending.
There are two other councilmembers waiting to ask a first or preliminary questions, and then we'll turn to public comment. The first is Ms. Robinson.
Thank you, ma'am. Going back to the slide that had the enforcement diagram, I didn't see that there was a, is there a stage where, after the complainant's made that a warning letter is sent, or is that something that we need to, it seems to me that, you know, if our purpose is not to, you know, immediately cite the offender, that there should be a stage where there's a warning from the city that a complaint was made? I'm sorry?
There's the notification letter. Notification letter? That's that letter.
Okay, and that's the warning that says, you know, someone made a complaint, please cease? Okay. And then, how long between the notification letter and the actual citation, or how long is it before another complaint would have to be made, before they're actually cited, or the process begins for the hearing you referred to?
I think actually, that's something I think would be determined as the city attorney's office worked, you know, worked to actually create the ordinance. The nuts and bolts of that part of it, I think, would be created then. I don't have a specific time period now.
Kind of piggybacking off of councilmember Vice Mayor Gordo's question, in your research, how have the other cities enforced the ordinance, the ones that had the hundred percent non-smoking?
In terms of our comparison of other communities, it's very slightly. Some have issued citation warnings. We have, for example, nearby Glendale has issued about fourteen citations in the last year and a half of implementation. Other communities are sort of moving along the lines that we're recommending, which is a phasing period, sort of to address councilmembers Robinson's question about notification. Depending on the discussion tonight and direction, we would probably work to look at developing a timeline for allowing a grace period for notification before any kind of citation or findings forward.
But with regard to the finding of fact that Vice Mayor Gordo referred to, did any of them have any particular established procedures with regard to that, beyond just the initial complaint by the neighbor?
I think, actually, not so much for other communities, but something that has come out with discussion from public commenters to look at possibly, as part of defining the findings of how you would sort of determine if a violation occurred, might be looking at multiple complaints, setting a number of complaints received for a particular tenant, also looking at whether or not defining the smell of smoke as part of the definition. There are tools, like Dr. Walsh alluded to, called CPACs and things like that, that do measure particulate matter inside the home, for example, of a complainant, and that is something that we could definitely look into purchasing as part of the follow-up for our ordinance, depending on how it's defined. Thank you.
Mr. Madison?
Well, I said this was complicated, you know, when we had the hearing, the committee had a lot of these same questions, and I wonder, though, whether we are approaching this sort of backwards by focusing so much on the enforcement, and I wonder if we shouldn't be thinking, you know, in the first instance, is this behavior that would be appropriate for the city to regulate? Or even that sort of speaks to enforcement, I guess, more. The question is, is there a goal here that's a laudatory public policy? A number of cities and counties in California are moving in this direction. We hear some moving testimony from people who are impacted. And, you know, for me, I would set aside for the moment the question of enforcement and just ask in the first instance, is there some policy, you know, goal here that we should be pursuing? And, you know, my concern at the hearing, the committee hearing, were more about sort of, were we moving with too much rapidity? And I get that, and I'm very proud that we're one of only three cities in the state to have a city health department and all, but it seemed like, and I didn't read that matrix of all the different cities, that we're pretty much, what's being proposed tonight is way, way out in front of virtually all of the cities, or at least many of them. And I think the code, the nuisance definition, I mean, Doctor, even in your description of going out on the sidewalk and moving around, that could give rise to a nuisance complaint. If, for example, there was a long red light cycle, one of the golden crossings or something, and there's a family there, that family would be exposed to a public nuisance. So I'm wondering also if we shouldn't maybe back off of that recommendation and just explore what the right regulation would be for the real issue at hand, which is multifamily, multi-unit housing. And there aren't a lot of analogues for that. And I think, you know, the other thing is just raising consciousness, just, you know, letting people know through these ordinances that we adopted, or whatever our efforts are. You know, it was interesting, there was news this week that the traffic fatalities dropped this past year, the lowest level ever, literally, since we've had cars. We had fewer traffic fatalities last year. When you go out on the freeway and everybody's going eighty-five miles an hour, it seems. I mean, it seems like there's an enforcement problem for you if you, if you wanted to tackle one, that we don't seem to have enough CHP or traffic cops to make people drive more safely, and yet somehow, what we're doing is moving things in the right direction. And this may be a similar example. But, so I just wanted to propose that, those couple of ideas about maybe taking the nuisance thing off the table, and also focusing on the restrictions on the housing, whether you limit it, as Victor was describing, to just the common areas, or you actually go into the interior of the units, and then not focusing so much on enforcement, but just on what the allowable policy goal is.
Mr. Gordo, your name has appeared on the list.
Thank you, ma'am. Doctor, I think you've made a very compelling case for the effects of secondhand smoke. I think that, you know, you referred to a lot of material that describes the health, proven health impacts, and I think that certainly is something we need to recognize and acknowledge, that that is real and it has this true impact. But I guess I'm wanting to know how that translates into the kinds of complaints that the health department was getting that became sort of the driver, if you will, for this proposed ordinance. I see the survey, but I'm curious as to the calls that the health department was actually getting, the types of calls, were they from throughout the entire city? Or are they any one particular area? Any types of units or apartments? Are they more in larger multifamily apartment buildings or condos? Or were you getting complaints from people who were living in other types of defined multifamilies? So I'm trying to get an understanding of what was driving this. Were we getting hundreds or thousands of complaints, or were we just getting what number? I mean, what was the impetus to create enough, the bells start to go off to say that we need to address this real issue with this type of proposal?
I can perhaps answer that. Actually, historically, in regards to looking at the issue, it was actually, it came forth from city council in terms of looking at other secondhand smoking issues. A couple of years ago, a question came up at the time from a council member asking why we weren't looking at where people dwell and live, and so the direction was to explore a little further. It was a relative. It was a relatively new issue.
That person's still on this council?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right.
But it was, it was, staff was directed to explore it based on it being seconded by the other council members. So in terms of, in terms of the initial discussion for it, as a result of that, actually, there was a slight increase of calls coming into the public health department, because people were under the assumption that it was already moving forward. So we were receiving calls, and we were explaining to the callers that currently, that there wasn't anything in place for staff to be able to provide, other than educational information, encouragement to talk to their neighbors if it became an issue. And so, as part of that, in terms of the numbers that you're talking about, the numbers of actual people who took the time to initiate calls, actually came down to the public health department with ill relatives, the numbers are about 70 in the last year and a half or two years. We do reckon this, however, many callers probably didn't make that effort, or come down to the public health department, so the number itself is probably a little misleading in terms of people who may have this as an issue.
Thank you.
That completes the request for public, for questions by members of the council. And it might be appropriate for us to turn to some 20, 25 cards that we have in front of us. Mr. Gordo?
I've got one more follow-up question. You know, we're talking about a change in the municipal code that would only impact private property, and I'm looking at attachment A to the report, and one of the things that jumps out at me is the apartment associations, or the Foothill Apartment Association, or some of the property owners, seem to support it, the notion of enacting this municipal code change. But they all have one thing in common, and that's that they don't want to enforce. In other words, they want regulation over property that they control, they own, control, and presumably lease to smokers. And they want the city to enact legislation to help them essentially police and partially manage their tenant relations. And what's the argument for inserting the City of Pasadena, or any other government agency, into tenant relations that landlords themselves don't want to be in the middle of?
I would say probably, and ultimately, the fact that we are, as government, do also have the responsibility to protect those who are being victimized and can't protect themselves. And I think ultimately, that's really what this boils down to. It's not the person in the apartment smoking, really. It's really the person in the apartment next to them, breathing in the smoke. That's what this is really all about. And I think both residents have to be taken into consideration, not just the person smoking and their rights, but I think we also have to consider the rights of the person in the apartment who has to breathe in smoke that can ultimately kill them. So I think that's why theoretically, many other cities, and I honestly think that, as Councilman Madison said, right now, maybe you're behind, but I'll play profit for a second, and say that the day will come when, if you stay where you are, you'll be behind. And the council has a decision to make. Do you lead in the safety of your residents, or do you follow?
One point that occurred to me, Victor, when you stated your question, it's not directly responsive, but looking at the correspondence that has come in, the point is made, time and again, that ownership multifamily housing versus apartment rental multifamily housing has arguably a different status for legislative purposes, because they have homeowner associations, and they're, and they're enabled, as I understand it, committee verified this by state law, to regulate smoking in whatever way seems appropriate to the owners of those units in the homeowners association. So it seems to me that a legislative body like the Pasadena City Council could draw a distinction, regardless of what kind of regulation might be under consideration, whether it's limited to outdoor and common area regulation, as you suggested it might be, or beyond that, that distinction could be drawn between ownership and non-ownership or tenant housing, and say, at this point in history, Pasadena is not going to take on the question of regulation of smoking in owned residential projects, because there is at least the potential, in all cases, and in the reality, in some cases, where smoking regulations are imposed in ownership units.
I agree, Mayor. I was just struck by the apartment associations, the California Apartment Association, don't want landlords to be the enforcement agents. The same statement is made next to the Foothill Apartment Association, in support of proposed policies, but do not want landlords to be enforcement agent. I agree with the distinction for ownership properties, because they do have CCNRs. But in my mind, the landlords also have the ability to regulate via the lease agreements or rental agreements with their tenants.
That's true.
Ms. Robinson?
I am not, I think we all received the many emails over the last few days, and I had an opportunity to read through them, and also speak to some individuals who were nice enough to correspond back and forth, and also speak to on the phone. And I think, even with the individuals of our community who did not agree with the proposal, I think one of the commonalities between all of them was that the need for the city council to expressly state that landlord, both owners and landlords wouldn't be responsible for enforcement. And even through all the committee meetings that we've had, and the presentations, I've never heard staff say that landlords or owners were going to be responsible for enforcement. But I think that should this go forward tonight, that we do explicitly include in the directive that it state that landlords and owners would not be responsible for enforcement, and that it would be the sole responsibility of the city staff, or the City of Pasadena.
Thank you. Let's turn to public comment, and I have a card in front of me from the former mayor of the City of Calabasas, a member of the city council for eight years. That city has, within the last couple of years, enacted legislation of the kind that is before us tonight. He has come here to offer a word of his experience, and may we recognize former Mayor Barry Grove Man of the City of Calabasas. Sir?
Mayor, members of the council, and your distinguished city clerk, who many of you know, got his upbringing in Calabasas under my tutelage, so if you like him, maybe you'll give me a little more weight. Thank you for letting me speak. I don't mean to butt in any way. Actually, two weeks ago, I was the mayor of Calabasas, so now I'm just pursuing hobbies. But I enjoy these opportunities, because most of what you've asked, I can at least give you the benefit of our experience, because we pioneered a lot of these things. And I don't have time to go into it, so maybe you'll use me as an opportunity to ask questions. I can certainly address the issue of nuisance, why there are advantages to actually designating it nuisance. I agree with the mayor's comments about the distinction between ownership and rental. We have that distinction. I understand the sky is falling argument. I can tell you it's blue, and I can tell you why. There's a lot of different things. I think what you have to start with, first of all, let me commend the city health officer. It's worth having a city health officer, I learned that tonight. And don't get too excited, because when I get back, I'm going to recommend that we hire him. End of story. Not a bad idea.
Mr. Mayor, your time is up.
Okay, and it was well spent. I think he's been very articulate, and I appreciate the leadership, that he's well reasoned in what he's saying. Let me just say this. First of all, I'm not somebody who believes in banning things. I'm not coming from that spectrum. I don't believe in banning anything. This is all about rights. And I agree with the city health officer, because the discussion needs, you have to decide whether you're going to move the discussion to the rights of the other citizens. I can tell you, having studied this, that there is no right to smoke, but there is a right to be safe. So if there is a right that's predominant, it's the right of the victim here, as is always the case. By the way, as background, I was the chief of environmental protection for the City of Los Angeles, so I was the city council's and the mayor's lawyer on many of these issues years ago. And I was also the head of environmental crime for the LA County District Attorney years ago. So I've been pretty involved in these things, and I know where things work and where they If you start off recognizing the ill effects of secondhand smoke, if you don't, you'll have a problem moving forward. I can tell you, we have no issue. I think it's categorically complete, full circle. Standing behind me figuratively and literally are the most unbiased folks there are, doctors, American Heart Association, Lung Association, cancer, they have no agenda. Their only agenda is public health. They're not lobbying, they're speaking the facts based on studies. And if you can grip the fact that these health effects are categorically catastrophic to victims, then everything gets easier. You know, one little example, when I was a DA, consider this when you're looking at comparing noise or smoke. We used to experience cases where people would bring their laboratory work from labs home at night. I don't see much of a difference, so in their sink, they might be doing biological work or infectious things. The state and the city would have a great interest in what's going on in that apartment if those effects were being felt next door. I agree, though, we were very concerned. Nobody's talking about going into apartments and doing search warrants or anything like that. In fact, I would tell you to stop thinking about enforcement, because with us, it was never an issue. I can get into it with questions. We don't even talk about enforcement. We have code officers that do it, we've had virtually none. Because as the health officer and others have pointed out, most people comply immediately. They really want to be respectful. 90% of the time, they didn't want to worry, they were sorry they were bothering somebody, and the first of law helps people ask them to respect it. So you're going to find it isn't the big fear, and that's what I'm here to sort of tell you, is we all had that concern too. None of it has emerged in three or four years. One anecdote about the severity of it, if you think it's a problem, the worst problem is in an apartment where you live. It can't be worse where, you know, on the street, when you're home with your kids, with your family, that's where you're feeling it worse. And Dr. Derek Ragavan, who is the head of the Cleveland Cancer Institute, came out and helped me when we were advocating this, and he gave me something that was astounding that I've used for years, and that was that a cigarette smoker has less effects from smoking than a secondhand exposure victim. And I said, well, how could that be? It doesn't make any sense intuitively. And the answer was, look, beyond the statistics, we've done surgeries on lungs, hundreds of them, and here's what we find. We find that a smoker is breathing a filtered cigarette that's very hot. So a smoker learns to breathe shallow, to stop the heat from going deep into the lung, so you start to cough, and to avoid the cough, it's a shallow breath. The nonsmoker, particularly when it's cool or it's blowing around outside, is now inhaling it unfiltered at a very cool temperature, and nothing inhibits it from getting into the very basic tissues of the lung. And that's how they know at these institutes for cancer research and clinical surgery, when the patient has been exposed to secondhand versus first, because it's much deeper in the lung and much harder to treat. That's why these things are getting very serious. I'm certainly not running around as an advocate or fanatic, I just recognize that in addition to law enforcement, public health and safety is paramount to citizens. That's what they really care about before everything else. The, also, another thing you can consider is a six-month review, because your concerns are very legitimate. So to make sure the health department doesn't go crazy and all these things don't happen, you can be more bold, I would suggest, but set it for a six-month or a one-year review, and if you start seeing anything that makes you uncomfortable, you can reverse it. But yet, you still took a bold step forward on behalf of public health. I tell you, you will never be sorry about that. Nuisance, you can ask me questions if you have any, but one of the values of identifying it as a nuisance, is nuisance comes with requirements in law. For example, you don't have a nuisance, you have to have a certain amount of witnesses, and that number may change depending on court decisions, but it generally requires several people to spot it. So if you designate it a nuisance, you're giving it a little bit of a protection. You're going to have to have several people, that would be the witnesses, that would be able to find it a nuisance. It almost in some ways could help. I'll leave it to the city attorney to analyze that. But I used to prosecute public nuisances, and we were guided by the requirement, if you didn't have the number the courts were at that time analyzing, then you weren't able to make the case on a nuisance. We can go on.
Mayor Grove, may I ask that you conclude your statement and give us a chance to ask a question too, with who you're required to slip away?
I've learned to stop at, when the judge says stop.
I was just going to say, Mayor Grove, and to be clear on my comment about the nuisance, not so much concerned with the number of witnesses, the number of colleagues I need to vote to adopt anything tonight, so, and I sense that that may be an issue, and it's not a frivolous position to have.
No, it's not really. In fact, what I was trying to say was, it might help you, or anybody that's concerned, more than it hurts, because it comes with a built-in protection, in that you can't just go out and claim somebody's committed a nuisance. I really would agree with you, though, the notion of people breaking into apartment buildings or doing, that's not what this is all about. This will be a very voluntary effort, you're going to find people who'll comply, and in the case of an apartment, it's going to be made by a lot of people noticing the smell, and they're all going to start to complain, and they're going to give the health officer the evidence. And it should never be enforcement first, in my personal opinion. It's letters and talk. Also, the businesses themselves help solve the problem. If you find somebody, for example, smoking at Starbucks, we don't go after the individual. We talk to the Starbucks management, and they quickly respond, and they make clear to everybody out there that this is the city's rule, and they solve it themselves. And they're very happy to do it. Now, in our city, the Apartment Association supported this 100%, and so did the chamber. We did a lot of outreach, we were very happy to have that. I will tell you that Archstone, one of the biggest apartment housing authorities in our city, actually complied two years early. And as mayor, three months ago, I gave them an award for going that far, and their argument was very simple. It's good business, it's good practice, it's good public health, and we're having no problem filling the spaces. So I'm not trying to give you any nonsense, I'm just trying to tell you practically what we've learned, and you can throw the hardest question out, and I'll try to give you the best answer I can, if I could be of any help.
Councilmember Tornick?
Both of the mayors seem to have concluded that excluding ownership housing, condominiums as opposed to apartments has some merit. It sounds like the Calabasas incident.
We did it that way. I would have liked not to, but I compromised as well. It turns out it's okay, because the mayor's right, there are generally associations. I will tell you, though, one of the things we thought about with our city attorney was going to the owned buildings that have associations, and asking them to adopt it, and if they say no, sending letters to all of the members of the association, asking them to vote.
So is it, based on your research and experience, is it, if people have bought units in a condominium project, and there were, there were no restrictions at the time they made those purchases, that the owners can amend the CCNRs in a way that would then preclude smoking and not generate a whole raft of litigation of homeowner against HOA and all that sort of thing?
I think they can, but that's a good question that the city attorney might best answer. I would only say to you, for that very reason, we decided to stay away from ownership. It conveys a different level of right, as you're sizing up. But again, it frustrates us, because in reality, if you took a vote of the association, you're probably going to find 80-plus percent that also agree. And one of the tactics that we were thinking of doing was asking the association boards to please take a vote, because if 80% said yes, we believe it'll be upheld, and then they now have the same rule the city does. And if they are unwilling to take a vote, we were going to think about sending a letter to all of the members and asking them what their position was to bring pressure on those groups.
Practically speaking, what has the experience been with the homeowner associations? I mean, do you?
We haven't really approached it. Many of them have stopped smoking in their, in their areas, and new buildings that are coming in, we've had affordable housing in all kinds of projects, and they come in proposing no smoking. So it really is the trend of the future, and I agree with, you know, really, an outstanding health officer, I don't know him, so I'm not trying to flatter him for any particular reason, but he's really right on about whether you want to be left behind, and whether you want to take the bull by the horns, which is what we decided to do. Whatever you do, you know, I understand, but I think, don't be afraid, that's why we're here. We're here not to be afraid. Sound. I can tell you it's sound.
We're grateful to you, sir, for sharing your, your experience in this area. It turns out with your professional background, to come back It turns out with your professional background, combined with your role as mayor and council member, you bring a tremendous perspective that's valuable to us.
I'm happy to voluntarily help in anything if you need it, and I thank you all, because it's kind of arrogant for somebody to come from another city, but I'm saying it in a way I hope you take as trying to be helpful to the issue.
Thank you very much. Smoking is smoking, and as a daughter of God. We now have some 20 or 25 cards from members of the community who wish to address us tonight, persons who are here and have a stake. The question that should be raised is whether any adjustment should be considered in the amount of time allocated to those who wish to speak.
Two minutes.
It isn't unusual for us to suggest a two-minute time limit when we have as many cards as Let's try two minutes and see if everyone seems to have a full opportunity to express their concerns. There could be among the speakers some overlap in the viewpoints that are being expressed on one side or the other. Now, the first speaker is Catherine Henry, Pasadena Foothill Association of Realtors, and the second card is Nancy Sagatellian. Ms. Henry, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, staff and council members. My name is Catherine Henry, and I'm the 2011 president of 1,900-member Pasadena Foothill Association of Realtors. We are neither for or against this at this time, but we have grave concerns about the practicalities of the draft of the secondhand smoke ordinance. While most of us decried smoking, we are also concerned that the city may pass on an ordinance that it cannot enforce, one that increases city's spending during the time of budget cutbacks, and one that presents it with potential huge liability exposure. Many of our members own managed income property or are fully cognizant of the inherent difficulties of what is proposed. Nonetheless, if reasonable and adequate answers to our questions below are provided, we would be willing to lend our support. With the enforcement and seemingly impractical positions, while staff is sincere in its belief that they would be able to police this complaint-driven ordinance, it's our experience that dealing with tenants is not quite as cut and dry as they would hope. In the face of tenant denial of smoking and without firsthand observation of such, how will the enforcement officer determine that the tenant was smoking at the time of the complaint? And without firsthand proof, how would a citation be issued? With the cost, it seems to us that the city, in this time of budget cutbacks, should not be undertaking a new and staff-intensive program. Shouldn't the city better spend its money on other things such as public safety, affordable housing, parks and open space? There's liability, how much money will the city be willing to spend in legal fees defending itself against lawsuits, cleaning private property trespass, or claims that the city did not stop smoking, or smoke from invading adjacent residents thereby causing the neighbor's illness? In enforcement, we've already heard about the alternative. While the movement towards making Pasadena a smoke-free city may be a noble objective, we would suggest that this would be best accomplished in the marketplace. Let landlords and our homeowners associations who find it in their best interest to operate smoke-free properties do that. And let the landlords or homeowner associations who want to attract smokers do that as well. While other cities may have recently enacted similar ordinances, there is yet no history of their success or failure. We believe the city is approaching a very slippery slope of increased government intrusion into people's homes, and we urge the greatest caution. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Sagatellian?
I need to speak slowly today, I forgot my inhaler. So can I have a few more seconds, please?
Please, go ahead.
Mayor Bogart, Mr. Beck, council members, Mr. Walsh and staff. Some men see things as they are and say, why? I dream things that never were and say, why not? George Bernard Shaw. Some months ago, all of you put on pink t-shirts in solidarity with the fight against breast cancer. But all that was said that night, not one person raised the issue of prevention. Sadly and too often, idealistic and good-minded people overlook the obvious. Secondhand smoke is a cocktail of toxins that causes many cancers, including breast To know all that we know and not do something about it is irresponsible and completely unacceptable. We made this ordinance because it will elevate the quality of life for that segment of our population in this city who have been affected by this. We cannot play politics with people's lives for the convenience of a few. Smokers have had their way for a very long time, and it is about time that they start taking responsibility for their actions and the effects their choices are having on the health and well-being who are in their path. President Kennedy said, "We will go to the moon, not because it is easy. We will go to the moon because it is hard." I ask each and every one of you tonight to do the hard thing. Go to the moon.
Thank you very much. The next two speakers are Armando Torres and Brenda Garcia.
Hello, my name is Armando Torres, I'm 14, I go to Pasadena High School. I support having smokeless multi-unit houses. I support it because I have a brother. My dad smokes, but the secondhand smoke and the breeze, he can kind of move it towards inside the house. And then, I want my brother to be somewhat affected by the smoke and grow up to become a smoker to affect future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brenda Garcia and Jasmine Sanchez.
Good evening, my name is Brenda Garcia, I attend Blair High School, and I'm 17 years old. And I'm here to say that I support this item on the agenda, because I personally have had different experiences, but one that really affected me was, I had a foster sister who slept next to the window, and while she slept next to a window, our neighbor would come outside to smoke, because his wife would allow him to smoke inside the house. And while he smoked outside, we would be asleep, and she had asthma. And she would snore because she had asthma, and it was like difficult breathing, and the cold air would allow her to sleep better. When he would smoke outside, the smoke would drift into the room, and she would cough and complain and cough and complain, and it was sad, because I would have to stay awake sometimes or keep an eye on her, and we couldn't sleep right. And eventually, she decided that she couldn't do it. She was like, no, like, you know, as much as I love this family, I have to move, because it's too much, it's too much of a struggle. And so she ended up leaving, and it was sad, because, you know, if there had been something, something like this, to say to that man, no, you know, you have to go by the rules and stuff, you know, it would have been a whole different story, and she would have never left, and nothing of that would have ever happened. And it's just sad. And hopefully, I mean, I don't know if you guys can understand, it would have been a way different story. I know other people have had similar situations where I know they support this ordinance for the same reasons. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sanchez, Jasmine Sanchez, followed by Ashley Mercado.
Good evening, I'm the mayor and city council. I just wanted to say that I'm really excited to be here. It's been two years, and I remember attending my first public safety committee as a volunteer. And I was a volunteer because I really believed in it. I knew people who were living under the same situation, being affected by secondhand smoke. I know that my family, my friends, and other people, 152 residents of Pasadena that couldn't make it here tonight are willing to be in support of this smoke-free choice in multi-unit housing, and I have their signatures here to prove that. I hope that their voices are heard tonight by passing this policy. I know their health really depends on it, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ashley Mercado, and then Rebecca Torres.
Good evening, the Indian City Council. My name is Ashley Mercado, I'm 16 years old, and I go to Pasadena High School. My little cousin suffers from asthma, and she lives in an apartment building where her neighbor smokes. And it's really difficult, because my aunt, like, she struggles at night to sleep and stuff, so, like, my aunt can't tell her neighbor anything, because there's no ordinance or anything in place that gives her that authority. My aunt doesn't have the funds to move anywhere else, because it's just economic, the economy is really bad. As a youth leader who has been taught to do something about what I don't like in my community, I am here to ask you to pass this to help empower your community to live in a healthier, cleaner Pasadena.
Good evening, my name is Rebecca Torres, I go to Pasadena High School, and I'm a youth advocate for Day One. I'm in favor of smoke-free multi-unit housing in Pasadena, because I have more than a couple of people I care about who have asthma and live in multi-unit housing. And with the drifting smoke going into their home, it really affects their health. And I also have a father who smokes, and fortunately, my dad is aware that smoking really affects our family, especially for me, since I had asthma. And he goes and takes a walk to smoke, so I no longer have to have an inhaler. And I feel that if it was no issue for my father being able to go outside and smoke, it shouldn't be a problem for others to do the same. Thank you.
Christie Simone, followed by Dr. Susan Tully. Good evening.
Good evening. As Mayor Bogart stated in his opening comments of this item, Pasadena has always been at the forefront when it comes to public health issues. I want to commend Dr. Walsh and his team at the Pasadena Public Health Department for presenting a thoughtful document that has heard the concerns of many Pasadena residents affected by drifting tobacco smoke. Actually, I'll take a minute. Can all the people in support of this please stand up tonight, that need the time to be here? Or raise your hands, please? We have a full room. And almost 200 signatures, and over 70 complaints that hit the Pasadena Public Health Department. We're all busy, and nobody takes the time to find the Pasadena Public Health Department to call to a complaint line. We all know that. We know how hard it is to get people out to vote. We all know that. So it takes commitment. This is a problem. This is not revolutionary. You know, our kids luckily don't get asked, would you like to sit in the smoking section or not smoking section in a restaurant? This is a smoking flight. There's hotels that are smoke-free. I stayed in one last night while we were at a conference in Sacramento with some youth, talking about these new innovator products the companies of tobacco companies are coming out with. Sneeze, it's like gum, it looks like Trident. You know, there's smokeless tobacco, because they know people are getting it, this is a problem, and you don't want it. So it's affecting their profit margins, and now they're taking the steps to create smokeless tobacco, because they don't want to lose their money. Well, this isn't about money, this isn't about enforcement, this is about public health. We're not talking about documents and lawsuits, we're talking about people dying. So, you know, we know that every policy that's passed by all of you to protect public health ends up moving us to a more sophisticated and more educated place. Please. So thank you all who are supporting this.
Thank you very much. Dr. Susan Tully?
How are you going to be able to hear me, I hope?
We have a microphone that we can hand to you.
I can talk loud. Thank you. I am here partly for myself and partly as a member of the Commission on Accessibility and Disability, because we've had something to do with this. We were one of the places that got complaints, in addition to the health department. A group of people with chronic illnesses came to complain to us about living in apartments where they were getting asphyxiated by the cigarette smoke that was coming from their neighbors. And that's how we got involved in it, and I know you know me, because I've been here talking about it before. I basically just cut out everything I was going to say. I was going to tell you all about Calabasas and their experience, but I didn't need to do that. So I just want to say that I'm kind of disappointed in a city council that worries more about people who are causing this pollution and their privacy rights than they worry more about the people who are getting poisoned by it. And that just bothers me. I'm a pediatrician, I see kids that are really badly damaged by secondhand smoke. I also, the men from Calabasas mentioned this, but it is true that secondhand smoke is worse than firsthand smoke. So they're getting even more poison. And that needs emphasizing, these are the victims here. And I see too many kids with asthma that didn't put up with it. Anybody who thinks you can't enforce, you can't prove that somebody's smoking, of course you can't, first of all, you can smell it. If they've smoked any time in the last two months, you could smell it in their apartment. Apart from that, it is possible to measure blood levels of a metabolite of tobacco, nicotine, called cotinine. So if you really wanted to help, want to prove, you could do it, but the fact is, it never comes to that. Every city that has ever done this and has had long enough to phase it in, people obey the law. And the fact is, they have minimal enforcement to do. So it's the least important thing that everybody seems to be worried about. I will stop with that, but I do wish you'd think about the victims here.
Thank you, Dr. Tully. The next speaker is Samuel Camarena.
He's in Oklahoma.
Thank you. And then Stephen Gallegos, Chair of the Coalition for Tobacco-Free L.A. County. Mr. Gallegos, followed by Esther Schiller.
Good evening, Mayor Bogart, members of the Pasadena City Council. My name is Stephen Gallegos. Besides being the Chair of the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Los Angeles County, I'm also a tenured member of the Pasadena Tobacco Prevention Coalition and a member of the Advisory Board for Smoke-Free Air for Everyone, Smoke-Free Apartments. I just want to say, appreciate Pasadena bringing up this ordinance. The fact is, every city that has passed a smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinance has never rescinded it. It seems to be a public health benefit for all the cities that have adopted this type of policy, and many more besides this august body are considering smoke-free multi-unit housing as the next step of public health protections for their citizens. You know, when we're talking about who this law is going to affect, let's consider that the people not benefiting from this ordinance live in single-family dwellings. People living in apartment buildings live in a shared communal living environment, and they're not privy to the freedoms associated with living in your own home, doing your own thing. Secondhand smoke will, you know, it slips into your room, and it slips into your home through cracks in the buildings, through the many years of earthquakes that we've had, through the shared heating and air conditioning ducts. And this secondhand smoke, when it lands on things, cauterizes to this poison called cotinine. And it gets, the secondhand smoke, when it comes into your rooms, I myself live in a communal living environment, and the secondhand smoke will wake me up at 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning, coming from somebody else's apartment, and by the time I wake up, the whole room is filled with smoke, and who the heck wants to get up at 2:00, 3:00 in the morn- And who the heck wants to get up at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning to try and fan that out? Well, that secondhand smoke gets into the bed sheets, onto your pillowcase, onto your toothbrush, your towel, your shower towel, and when it lands, you know, it does turn into that cotinine, which is a major cause of sudden infant death syndrome. And when you have smokers that are lighting up, lighting up, lighting up, spewing a constant flow of particulate matter from, into the air, it affects the lives and health of those around them.
Mr. Gallegos, would you bring your statement to a close?
Yes, sir, thank you. I want to say, just, I appreciate the fact that you've brought this up and ask you to consider support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Turn to Esther Schiller, and then Kathy Bradhill, and then Ian Nunley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Esther Schiller. I am Director of an organization called Smoke Free for Everyone. We're funded by the California Department of Public Health to provide information to housing industry professionals, residents of multi-unit housing, and policymakers about the problem of drifting tobacco smoke in multi-unit housing. We worked with policymakers in Calabasas, South Pasadena, Santa Monica, Glendale, and Burbank, and we're very disappointed, and I would say this to Barry's face, that Calabasas did not do anything about condominiums, but they were the first city in Los Angeles County to do this. The big problem with condominiums is frequently the board will do nothing, and the person who has the condominium that the smoke is coming into cannot sell that condominium because they've got to disclose that smoke is coming into that unit. Most people who own condominiums are not wealthy people, they can't afford lawsuits. A designation that smoking is a nuisance, that drifting tobacco smoke is a nuisance in all multi-unit housing would give people who are suffering in condominiums a huge leg up. I have diverted myself from what I prepared. We have a website on the internet, smokefreeapartments.org, where we list the vacancies of apartment owners who've made their property non-smoking. These people don't have vacancies because when people move into a smoke-free building, they don't want to move. The problem that we get, we get hundreds of people calling us for help, and we can't help them if there's no law in the city. And we talk to the landlords, but the landlords are confused, they don't know what to do. Most landlords don't belong to apartment associations where they might get some assistance, and they're looking for some kind of help. And if they write into their leases according to what the city requires, that this is a non-smoking building or this is a non-smoking section, that gives them the power then to enforce. Right now, they're terrified that they can't enforce, and I see I have to stop. But I'm available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Your written submission will be made a part of the record. Kathy Bradhill, Mr. Bradhill, and then Mr. Nunley.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Kathy Bradhill, and I'm a condominium owner. And if you live in a condominium above that of a smoker, your only hope of a smoke-free night is to book a hotel room. I represent a condo complex of about 110 units, a smaller complex of about 75 units, and a third, smaller, eight-unit complex. The Pasadena Public Health Department last year did a survey of our residents regarding smoke-free issues at the request of the board for the very reason that Esther mentioned, because they feel they don't have any tools to enforce something like this. And it's interesting to note that, I believe it was 94% or thereabouts of the residents surveyed wanted to prohibit secondhand smoke from entering their homes. And it was very interesting to note that many of those who answered were smokers. They were smokers, and they don't want secondhand smoke in their home. If you would please then, consider me as the 200, 300 working men and women, infants, toddlers, make of me as a school-aged children, the retirees, the pregnant women. We battle asthma, illness, we're elderly, we're endurance athletes, and we're newborns. All of us need clean, smoke-free air. Imagine waking up to find your baby's nursery swathed in smoke in the middle of the night. Waking up in the middle of the night, 2:00 in the morning, and it's like a nightclub. Having to live behind shuttered, sealed windows and doors 24/7. When my downstairs neighbor smokes in his kitchen, my organic grain breakfast smells like an ashtray. My clean hair, fresh from the shower, will soon have ash, as do my curtains, carpet, bedding, clothing, linens, you name it. This is a 1995 edition of the Pasadena Star News that carried dire doomsday predictions about the restrictions that this council imposed on smoking in the workplace. And those remarks, those dire predictions, came from the Chamber of Commerce, and interestingly enough, from the National Smokers Alliance, which was really that phony front from the tobacco companies. It seems almost quaint to look at some of these gloom and doom predictions, and in reviewing the marks from Mr. Little from the Chamber of Commerce, I see the same old arguments. They didn't hold water 16 years ago, and they don't hold water today because the same businesses that were mentioned in this article are very alive and well and doing quite well.
Ms. Bradhill, would you bring your statement to a close?
Absolutely. Intelligent, forward-thinking council members made the right decision 16 years ago, and I'm confident that all of you will continue in the direction in which the council embarked that time ago and do the right thing for public health.
Thank you. There's a question from the Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor? I'm curious, you mentioned your homeowners' association. Can you just help me understand why the homeowners' association wouldn't amend the CCNRs? Do you have CCNRs? I'm just trying to...
We have CCNRs.
You do? And they amended it, was there a reason why they were not?
They don't feel that they have the right to do it. They, what was, I know that there were city staff that were there, and we had meetings, and we talked about the dangers of cigarette smoke, and I recall one or two of the members on that board smoked. And even though they don't want smoke in their homes, they're not willing to amend the rules.
So, the support wasn't there? The support was not there on the board?
Well, it was probably there for the majority. But you know how it is, you know? The general idea that I got from the board was that they wanted the city to do something about it. They didn't want to have to be the bad guy. But if the city did something, then it sort of, well, you know, the city did it and they'll be happy to enforce it. They just want an overall aegis of authority to come in and give the okay for them to go ahead and enforce that.
Thank you very much. Return to Ian Nunley, and then David Wheatley.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ian Nunley, and I work as the Health Policy Liaison at Day One, and I'm a member of the Pasadena Tobacco Prevention Coalition. I believe that it is vital this ordinance be passed in order to ensure clean air residential environments for all, for all the residents of Pasadena that live in multi-unit housing. This is a public health and safety issue that must be addressed. The most recent Surgeon General's report states that secondhand smoke contains a dangerous concoction of 7,000 chemicals, with hundreds of them being toxic and as many as seven of them being, 70 of them being cancer-causing. And while you and I may know the boundaries of a house, the walls, the roof, et cetera, these carcinogens do not. I have the pleasure of working with some of the best, brightest, and most beautiful youth Pasadena has to offer through my job at Day One. And I would never want to see any type of physical harm or illness brought upon them by something as preventable as drifting secondhand smoke. This comprehensive ordinance is about moving towards creating safe and healthy housing options for all residents of Pasadena, young and old. In addition to this public health front, it also makes sense for building owners on an economic level as well. It costs as much as five times more to clean a repair unit that has been smoked in when there's tenant turnover. Also, a number of insurance companies offer discounts for non-smoking residential buildings. This is an ordinance that makes sense on all levels for the city and its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wheatley, and then Marge Melody.
Thank you very much. I'm David Wheatley, Mr. Mayor of City Council, and the Chair of the Pasadena Tobacco Prevention Coalition. And we have voted to support this adoption of the staff report. I'd like to comment on a few things that have been raised this evening regarding exempting condominium associations. HOA boards, and I've been the president of one, I've served as a board member on one, as far as them being a heavy to get people to stop smoking, they're lightweight-heavy, they really can't do it. Talk about neighbor pitted against neighbor. To have homeowners' associations enforcing this is not going to work out. We need a bigger heavy, and the city of Pasadena is the perfect choice. As far as market, letting market conditions drive things and voluntary policies, that's what we have now. That's how we got 70 to 75 complaints. That's how we got Jasmine's list of signatures and all the people that are speaking here in favor of this ordinance. That's what marketplace conditions and voluntary compliance has gotten us. As far as privacy of their own home, I noticed in the letter from Mr. Little talking about the private confines of one's home. As far as smoke goes, these aren't private confines, the smoke just goes out of the confines. So, that argument doesn't really hold up. And it really seems unfair that one person should be able to smoke in the privacy of one home, one's home, in the pursuit of constitutional pursuit of happiness while the neighbor next door is unable to have that same pursuit. The aggressor is really the smoker. It starts with the smoker, and we really need to adopt this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Melody, and then Bob Reiter.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm just a concerned citizen. I'm concerned about my individual rights. Smoking is not a crime. I love a smoke-free environment. All of us want to be healthy and happy, and I eat organic and all that. But government's role should be to protect my freedom, my individual freedom. Smoking's not a crime. And if you make it a nuisance, then I guess you're somewhat making it a crime. But I just don't get this hysteria. If it is so dramatic, then shouldn't we be taking every child away from a parent who's smoking in their home? I think, I think this is something that neighbors have to work out. I think if a building's air conditioning system is so awful that people are getting smoke, but I've been with it for 25 years and I've never had anyone complain about their condominium having smoke in it and all these stories that I'm hearing. Yeah, I'm sure those stories are true, so there's something wrong with their system that, that smoking is, the smoke is getting from here to there everywhere. Anyway, I really think you should tread cautiously. I think it's too intrusive into private lives of people. And yes, we all want a good environment, and I just don't feel making an ordinance banning the right to smoke in your own residence is the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob, and then Wesley Woodman.
I don't want to shoot any arrows, but this previous speaker is the reason why we need the ordinance. And Mayor Bogart, Councilmembers and city staff, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on the issue of proposed smoking ordinance. And Dr. Walsh, thank you for cutting my speech in about half because you've covered most everything that I wanted to. I urge all of you to please approve the proposed smoking ordinance prohibiting smoking in multiple family dwellings such as apartments and condominiums. And I really believe that the law should also apply to condominiums as well because of some of the problems that we have with our boards. They don't have the cojones to be able to pass anything in this regard. It seems that, you know, it will take every bit of your courage to stand up to those who would prevent the overwhelming majority of Pasadena citizens who don't smoke and who have no mechanism by which they can stop smoke from invading their private living space, their home, whether it be an apartment or a condominium. It seems that there are businesses interested in the city who cry out quite vociferously that smoking is bad for business. I'm referring to the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce. Quite frankly, I don't understand the relationship of the chamber to my having a smoke-free condominium. I remember this same cry in 1983 when then-Councilmember Jess Houston proposed no smoking in restaurants. Many local restaurateurs complained it would be a bad business decision. Actually, it had the exact opposite effect, and now smoking restaurants are so popular that Pasadena even has an ordinance prohibiting smoking within 20 feet of their doors. Let's be real, smoking is a terribly addictive habit that kills people, not only the smoker, but people around them who inhale their secondhand smoke, whether it be in an open area or within confines in an apartment or condominium. And if you believe the statistics, lung cancer is the number-one killer. I live in a 14-unit condominium development with one heavy smoker in the building across our driveway. On either side of this smoker, there are two children who are asthmatic and are severely affected by the cigarette smoke that works its way through vents, windows, and the microscopic cracks in the adjoining walls. They have asked her to stop, and she refuses.
Bob, would you bring your statement to a close?
I will. One more sentence and that's it. To call this a nuisance would require homeowners to sue each other, costing more money than would be the cost of medical treatment for these two children. The citywide law would be their only salvation. And one of the things that the city attorney has not brought up is Americans with Disabilities Act. And I think these two children are protected, you know, individuals who could sue either the association or the city. That's something that might be in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Return to Mr. Woodman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. You should also receive a copy of the Surgeon General's 2010 report now. Gives a good overview of how unequivocal the evidence is at this point. There's a 300-page report online, so feel free to reference that if you want more information. Rather than go over my prepared comments, I just wanted to touch on a few things that have come up here. First, for Councilmember Holden, Sid Tyler was the council member back in May 2008 who asked, "Why is the City Council not addressing housing at this time?" It seemed axiomatic to him that if we were going to regulate smoking in outdoor areas where the exposure is far lower than it would be in a housing situation, that it only made sense also to pass protections for multi-unit housing. I also think it's really important, especially since many of us do have the luxury of living in single-family homes or in new upscale multi-unit housing that has gone entirely smoke-free, to think about what it actually is like to go home to an environment where smoke has penetrated your home environment. And I think the best example of that is the station fire. I think during the station fire, all of us really got a taste of what it's like for some of the stories, for the people who've been sharing their stories with you. No matter what you did, there was no way to keep that smoke out of your, out of your home, regardless of where you were living. Regarding enforcement fears, every policy that's come before this council, in 2008 when you did outdoor areas, there were enforcement questions that ran the gamut. Everyone was afraid that it wouldn't work. For the most part, it has been incredibly successful. There have been a few businesses that were not as diligent about making sure their patrons do not smoke in outdoor dining areas, but the city has not had to use a lot of manpower to make sure that policy is working. If we never acted on issues where there wasn't a track record of success, as has been previously mentioned, we'd still have the status quo. We'd still have smoking in airplanes, we'd still have smoking in elevators, we'd still be smoking in here. I think ultimately, you need to think about how much of an imposition is this on smokers? We're not saying you can't smoke, we're just saying, please do not smoke in areas where you're affecting other people. And if you absolutely need to have your nicotine fix, there are a host of smokeless tobacco products that can probably get you over if walking outside of your building is too much to ask. So, with that, thank you for your time.
Return to John Greck. John, is he still here? And then Brina Angiano. And then Julie Selders, Ms. Selders. And then Jacqueline Fernandez, and then Christine Reiter. Ms. Selders.
Good evening. Several years ago, I was reading the Star News and I read about, is this what you want to say? And I read about South Pasadena planning to pass this same kind of ordinance, and I thought, oh my gosh, I'm glad I don't live in that small-town provincial place I live I live in sophisticated Pasadena where they're diverse and they're tolerant. And so you can imagine by shock last Saturday when I read that you're considering the same thing. I think that it's an invasion of individual liberties. I live in a condo. I don't care what you do about apartments, but I live in a condo. I own that property. The woman next door to me smokes, but I wouldn't even know it, except that once in a while I can smell if she goes and smokes outdoors. But nothing comes through. There's, there's, there's no problem. And I think if, in the last year or so, you've only had 70 complaints in a city of a couple hundred thousand, that maybe you should use the half a FTE to go after those people who are the problem and not penalize the whole rest of the city for a 70-person problem. That's, that's all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Fernandez.
Hernandez, thank you. Good evening. My name is Jackie Hernandez. I'm with the American Heart Association. And I need to urge you to support a smoke-free multi-unit housing. We know the facts. Smoke drifts, especially if you're in an apartment building. It enters through your plumbing, your electrical systems. It permeates your cabinets, your closets, your ceiling fans, your fireplaces, your ventilation, your ventilation systems. It comes from under the doors in the hallway. Most importantly, besides being an advocate for public health and tobacco cessation, I love Pasadena. I can't stress how much I love Pasadena. When Wes asked me to be here, I said, "I was born in Pasadena. I went to Montessori in South Pass on the corner of Huntington and Fremont. I got married here at the Westin across the street. I have family who lives in Pasadena. I eventually want to retire and buy a home on the corner of Sierra Madre in, in California." I can't afford that at the moment. And when I first got married, I was going to move into the Paseo at the apartments up there. But now that I know that Pasadena is not smoke-free, I don't know that I'm comfortable spending $2,500 a month living in a, in an apartment building at the Paseo, knowing that I may be devastated by the ramifications of secondhand smoke. So I really urge you to consider smoke-free multi-unit housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christine Ryder.
My name is Christine Ryder, and I'm treasurer of my condominium association. And I had a number of planned comments, but I think I'm going to address several of the issues that you brought up. When we purchase our units, usually we know if we have a smoker or non-smoker. And I know if I'd had a smoker, we wouldn't have purchased. And I think having been, having, going through the process of rewriting our CCNRs right now, a majority, matter of fact, all of our homeowners want to be smoke-free. However, those younger ones are mistakenly, or they mistakenly believe that it would reduce the value of their units. The statistics have proven otherwise. Unanimously, everybody said we'd like to be non-smoking, but we really don't want to impose it in our CCNRs, so beef up the smoking in the, in the nuisance area. To answer the question of CCNRs, they're very costly, very costly to rewrite. Most associations don't have the money to do that. You're talking about a $7,000 minimum fee to just get started on the process, and then you talk about 250 to 450 bucks an hour beyond the rough draft that they have. So to leave out the condominiums in this case would be a huge mistake because our homeowner said, "Beef up the nuisance. We really don't want to impose this, but really, we do want non-smoking. And if the city goes with it, go for it, Chris. See what you can do to get it done, because then we'll honor it. And we want to enjoy our cigarette, our cigars on the smoke, on the Fourth of July in our patios." We happen to have a next-door neighbor who enjoys smoking cigars occasionally in the summer, about three times a month. We close our windows, and yet we still go to sleep with the smell of cigar smoke in our nostrils and wake up to it in our room in the morning. This is on his patio next door to us. Those neighbors who live on both, who have the asthmatic children on both sides of them are helpless, and the neighbors two units away still get the smoke. We are individual units. We have our own plumbing. We can turn them off within our units, but it seeps through everything. I can smell what my neighbor is cooking for dinner in my plumbing upstairs in my bedroom. That's my comment. So please consider.
Thank you very much. That completes the public comment that has been requested tonight and allows the council to turn to the question of what direction we wish to go. It is, I think, clear in everyone's mind that we're being called upon to give the city attorney a direction to prepare a draft ordinance. And while normally we try to pin down the policies in a definitive way, in this case, if the council were to choose to take a fresh look at one issue or another that might be approved tonight for new regulation in regard to drifting smoke, the council would have the opportunity in 60 days or when the city attorney returned with a draft ordinance to think further about that particular issue or one or another of the particular issues. Ms. Robinson is, is waiting, and then we'll turn to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the community members that came out tonight to comment on this matter, both at the commit, public safety committee level and also tonight. And also, I know he's gone already, but thanks to Mayor Grove, who drove from Calabasas to share with us his views, both as, you know, a professional in environmental health, but also as one of our local legislators. Prior to tonight, I was already leaning towards supporting the proposed amendment, but after tonight, after tonight, I'm further compelled to support the code amendment. I think that the pros far outweigh the negative, the possible negative response that we might give with regard to regulating this as a public nuisance. And I might point out that in all of the public comment that we received tonight, I didn't, number one, I didn't hear one person that said they were a smoker, if that's any implication. But number two, I also think that we have a public safety obligation to protect the non-smokers as well. And I completely agree that, you know, people, everyone has their individual freedoms and has a right to smoke if they want to. But I think that we've clearly heard both from the public comment tonight, as well as all the background information that was given to us in the staff report and other studies, that, you know, try as you might, there's no way to, to contain secondhand smoke. And I think for anyone that's around secondhand smoking, subjected to it, and especially if you live with a smoker, which I also happen to, even if you smoke outside, the smoke still comes through the windows. Even if the windows are closed, it still comes through. And I think that anybody, that also, also that anybody that lives with a smoker knows that it doesn't go away, you know. And with regard to the enforcement of this, I think that even if a city staff person were to go to someone's home to verify the complaint essentially, and even if they don't step foot inside their home nine times out of 10, you're going to be able to smell it even from just the doorway because smoke, the effects of smoke sticks to your hair, your clothes, et cetera. I don't think that we should make a distinction between ownership condos and rental unions. I think that if we're going to go forward with the ordinance, that we should do it all the way. And for those reasons, I'm going to support the staff recommendation and actually make a motion that we not just adopt what's in the staff report, but also add in the express language that owners and landlords would not be responsible for the enforcement of the ordinance. And also that after the language comes back to us and we, and if we subsequently approve it, that it comes back for review for a year after we, for a year after it's been implemented to see how it's been affecting the city. And then secondly, I know that some council members are maybe still apprehensive about supporting this tonight, and so I might add that, you know, if council members feel that they would only be able to support this tonight, if it were applicable to only rental units, then I would support, even though I don't think that there's a clear enough distinction about the effects of the smoke on rental units versus ownership, that I would still support the motion even if it were only limited to rentals.
Mr. Grove was next, and then Ms. McAllister.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question for staff regarding, maybe you'd covered this, and I missed it in the presentation, but the 70 complaints, how were those handled? And I mean, just, I don't need specifics, but generally, what, what's the outcome when somebody calls in, files a complaint? What do we do currently?
I'll defer that to John Stotis.
Question in terms of some of the types of questions are reflected in the staff report, but they extended from air seeping in through patios as well as through other vents and things like that. In most of the cases of the 70 complaints, what we did was based on what we were able to do, given the fact there's no direction currently for stop, and that is to, to try to have a dialogue with the neighbor that they believe the smoke emanated from. And in most cases, one, that did occur, but smoking didn't change. The smoking impact didn't change. And then secondly, some people did report that they felt uncomfortable sort of having that conversation without any kind of ordinance in place so they could refer to it being a city ordinance.
Mr. Grove, is that sufficient at the moment?
I guess yes and no. I mean, I'm just not sure. So essentially, there's no real remedy currently because there's no enforcement. Is that, is that the answer?
The bottom line is, I mean, it, there's no law against it. So I mean, it's really no, we have no authority to tell them able to do anything, or even ask them to, in a sense. Basically, that's fundamental to the question we're really raising tonight.
Ms. McAllister, and then Mr. Madison.
Thank you. In terms of our multi-unit housing, our, our new housing stock, do we have, do we have restrictions on new housing? In other words, is new housing allowed to be smoking, or is all new housing in Pasadena required, multi-housing required to be smoke-free? Is there any restriction on new construction?
Currently, our understanding is there's no restrictions. There are some new construction that if the attorney needs lead certification, may attempt to establish smoke-free policies in order to comply and get that additional building certification.
But the newer, I think it was in the staff report, the newer projects that have been constructed in Pasadena have been 100% smoke-free. Is that right?
I don't believe that's the case. I believe any of the ones that we're aware of have done it intent, like on a voluntary basis.
Right, but they've voluntarily been 100% smoke-free?
I think the only one I'm aware of is the West Gate rental units, which has gone ahead and done voluntary smoke-free for the entire building.
And then I'm, I'm looking at page six on the staff report, and in the last paragraph there, you talk about the possibility, if this were to be adopted, that for early adopters, the city of Pasadena could implement a smoke-free certification program whereby staff could check and monitor smoke-free multi-unit housing complexes and place this information via a link on the city's website so as to give something of an incentive for properties that move to be 100% smoke-free. Is there some reason we couldn't move forward with that, with that sort of a, more of a carrot approach, whether or not this item tonight moves forward?
I think we definitely can do that regardless of what happens. Obviously, if we do that, there is no guarantee that, you know, those units that decide not to do it would ever do it, and especially in owned condominiums, that probably wouldn't work either for obvious reasons. But obviously, yeah, that is something that could be done.
So we could, to date, we have not really adopted an aggressive voluntary program to move towards 100% smoke-free environment and multi-unit housing, have we?
Well, I don't know that there is such a thing. The other cities that have tried that, it failed miserably.
Is that right?
And so, I mean, the most we could do is maybe give them a link on a website, and I don't know that that's enough of a carrot. Maybe if we, you know, drop the fee for building it or lower the taxes on the place, I don't know, maybe something like that would work. But I think you'd have to have a really big carrot for it to work.
But in, in terms of the existing housing stock, you've not engaged in any program to encourage them to move to smoke-free?
If I could answer sort of in, in general, historically, in the last five years, staff with the tobacco control program have attempted to provide training seminars regarding encouraging property owners or managers to attend a training on how to establish voluntary policies. However, that has not been successful in terms of get, be an incentive enough for attendance. And if I recall correctly, of the two or three seminars that were held for that purpose, the attendance was not very strong.
I see. So you, so you did undertake an effort, but it was not successful, not well attended?
But I should point out that we didn't have some of these incentivized things that you're talking about. We didn't talk about establishing a online program yet. It was more like, if this is something that is of interest to you, the program will offer these training seminars. And so there wasn't a built-in program attached.
I see.
It was just, this is a training opportunity.
I see. Thank you.
Madison.
Mayor, there are a lot of moving parts here. I mean, I'm looking at one of the matrices that was provided to us, and if you look at the other cities, again, I think the starting point is, you know, do you think there's a problem here? I'm convinced that there is. And I'm also mindful of, you know, people's right to, you know, enjoy themselves in their own ways, so long as it's legal and ethical. And so you certainly don't have the power to outlaw smoking, you know, broadly, or in people's homes, you know, broadly. But clearly, there is an impact on the, on the neighbors and on kids, and there's a clear budgetary link here in terms of the, the state budget and our own city health department budget, the costs of combating these illnesses that are caused by secondhand So, you know, I'm inclined to, to try to take some step to address this as a matter of public policy. As I'm looking at these different charts, you know, there's the ownership versus rental distinction that you pointed out, Mayor. There is the existing units versus new units. Some cities have taken the position that they're only going to regulate based on new construction. Others speak to existing units. Others still have a split of percentages of what they try to reach. There's, some communities use time, over time, to phase these in. Some communities look at the number of units, and they say, if you live in, you know, a unit, a building... building of a certain size, then you're regulated. If you're not, you're not. That seems counterintuitive to me, because the people who live in a duplex or fourplex should have the same rights as somebody living in a twelveplex. In fact, I guess the impact would be even more harmful if it's a smaller, smaller building. It'd be ironic, I suppose, if the city of Pasadena, one of only three in the state that has its own public health department, we have a great new public health director, we, the Southern California headquarters for Kaiser Permanente, we've got one of the greatest hospitals anywhere here in Huntington, we've opened a new urgent care, we're committed to general health and fitness and public safety across the board. I think it'd be tragic if we didn't take a leadership role here. I guess where I'm coming at, and all of us, I suppose, have to make our own judgments about it, but is, I don't see the nuisance provision as being the one that's particularly important to what we want to accomplish right now, and that seems to need to trigger the most questions about enforcement. I also know that we have lawful businesses in Pasadena, including a couple in my district, where people under their CUP can come and enjoy tobacco, cigar, or, you know, other forms of tobacco. And so it would seem, contrary to that idea, that we would then say it's also a public nuisance, you know? So I don't support the nuisance piece today. And I think beyond that, I would be prepared to support the staff recommendation without making any distinction between ownership and rental, and proceed that way, maybe with, as Mayor Grobman suggested, some sort of six-month or one-year lookback, so that we can consider the effects of what we've done. But I'm just one vote, and I don't know where my colleagues are, and I don't know if the maker of the motion would be willing to accept a friendly second that would withdraw the part about nuisance.
I have a question for the city attorney. What effect would the ordinance have without the nuisance designation?
It would still provide that it would be a violation to be in a multifamily unit and have the smoke escape into an area outside the unit. So it would be an administrative penalty. And, excuse me, the citation process would be what would apply. We would not use the public nuisance as a basis for a specific, either civil or action brought by the city or by someone else. The administrative citation process would be what would apply.
May we leave open the question of exactly what the reaction is to the public nuisance element of the four proposals that are in front of us? In turn to Mr. Tornick, give him a chance.
From my point of view, this nuisance issue, if it's, if it's an enforceable ordinance, I'm not persuaded that it's critical that the nuisance provision apply either. I think, I would also like to commend Dr. Walsh and the other staff people that have worked on this, because I think this is long overdue. I think that, you know, the city's primary function is to safeguard, as Jackie's pointed out, public health and safety, and I can't think of a more compelling illustration than this one, if you believe the research, and I do. I mean, I'm persuaded, not just by material that we've received tonight, but, and the excellent testimony that we've had tonight, but from my own reading, that this is a critical public health issue. And I'm also persuaded, and I'm much more comfortable in terms of this compliance issue, which would seem to be a problem. I think the testimony is on point, that in general terms, most people will comply with, with the law. If they understand that those are the regulations, they'll comply with it. There will be some scoff laws there, maybe some people who get away with it ultimately and don't comply, and then maybe some people that, that make a fuss about it or declare that this is an intolerable invasion of their liberties and their privacy rights. But I don't think that, I don't think that's compelling, and I think public education will handle most of those issues. There will be some small percentage that will, that will feel that this is communism or some form of terrible violation of their, their civil liberties. And I also frankly am persuaded that the city does need to be the heavy here, that a voluntary process is not going to be successful, that homeowner associations can't be relied on to go through the process, even if the vast majority, I think Christine Reader's testimony was very persuasive in terms of what the reality is, having been the president of an HOA on several unhappy occasions in my life, know what the realities of the politics of HOAs may be. And I think that people who might be reluctant to undertake both the expense and the internal politics of challenging their neighbors' views would be delighted and thrilled, as would most apartment owners, frankly, and to Victor's question, I mean, the vast majority of apartment owners would be delighted with this process, to the extent that they don't have to be the enforcement arm of this. They're delighted because it means when they turn an apartment, it'll be cheaper and faster, and the place won't stink. They don't have to worry about the place being burned down by somebody falling asleep in bed. I mean, it's an endless, it would be a huge relief from a property owner's point of view to have the city in the position of mandating these regulations. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this proposal. The only question I really had for Dr. Walsh is, is why it's going to take nearly three years to put it in place? I, I understand the way, the way the proposal is written, that it's six, by 2012, there'd have to be paperwork notifying people of what the ordinance is about, and there'd be an effort to do educational programs, et cetera, and outreach during the course of, presumably from now, from the time it passed to, through all of 2012. Why do we need yet another year, all of 2013 to go by, in order to, to implement the program? What's the reason for that extra year delay?
We don't. We could do it sooner.
You know, I mean, I, we're here in still early 2011, and I'm not clear on why we would delay implementation of this to 2014. So the only amendment, friendly amendment that I would offer in this regard would be that the implementation rather than in 2014 would happen in 2013. But apart from that, I think Jackie's summary of the various additions that we'll offer is, are excellent, and I think that unless I hear the contrary in terms of enforceability, I have no objection to what Steve Madison is offering with regard to not pursuing the nuisance claim, and I think we can, we should be able to accelerate this process and give direction to staff to bring this back quickly and put it in place.
And I'm willing to accept both amendments as proposed by Councilmember Madison and Tornick.
Madison is listed on the clerk's records at the moment as the seconder of the motion. Ms. McAllister?
So, to clarify, in looking at the, at the items that are on our screen, item A would be eliminated, based upon the motion as it's set forth at this moment. So what this ordinance would do would be to prohibit tobacco smoking on patios, balconies, and in outdoor common areas of multi-unit housing.
No, my understanding was item A would not be eliminated, just the part as public nuisance. And you may recall that in the staff recommendation on the screen, it was switched from an infraction to an administrative penalty under chapters 1.25 and 1.26. That would remain. So it would restrict smoking in multi-unit housing by amending the code to prohibit it and have the penalty be an administrative penalty under part A. That's my understanding of what the motion is. And then, also in patio balconies.
So the administrative penalty pursuant to Pasadena Municipal Code chapters 1.25 and 2.6 would be the enforcement measure for B. Is that correct?
Well, for B, but I, my understanding was it was to restrict smoking in multi-unit housing, and I thought within inside as well.
But that's what I'm trying-
That's what I think they were trying to say.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, because it was, it was my understanding that if you eliminated the language, making it a public nuisance, then what we're talking about here was really prohibiting it in these accessible and/or common outdoor areas. No, so you're still talking about prohibiting it within the interior of the units?
Yeah. That's correct.
That would be D. D is actually the part that restricts it inside the units.
Okay. But, okay, D would restrict it on the interior of the units by phasing it out between now and 2013 or 14, depending on how that ended up. But you, you couldn't, could you receive an administrative penalty for smoking inside your unit pursuant to 1.25 and 1.26?
It must be within the discretion of this council to give that advice, but what would be-
I'm trying to understand how, what has been proposed would be enforced and what it would cover.
Michelle?
Well, I think we should ask Dr. Walsh what their intention is in terms of the recommendation.
Well, I think, I think if you remove the nuisance clause, basically, the nuisance clause is a, is a time-sensitive piece. What would happen is the ordinance would want to affect, and before D went into effect, you would have A to fall back on if we have complaints. That's actually what it was written or it was written. If you remove A and shorten the time period, you actually don't have a very different set of recommendations, because after, let's just say for now, January 2013, at that time, the entire interior of the building would be smoke-free, as would all of the common areas, patios and balconies. And so, you know, now, if someone did have a complaint, they could complain that you are in violation of the ordinance that has prohibited smoking inside of the building.
So with that, the administrative penalty, as Councilmember McAllister mentioned, would be, once the effect, the ordinance becomes effective in the summer sometime, perhaps, that would be applicable to the smoking on patios and balconies and outdoor areas, and would apply to the interior of individual units by either 2013 or 14, depending on what you decide.
No, that's not what I heard Dr. Walsh say. What, what I heard you say is even, I understand if we want to say between now and 2013 or 14, we want to eliminate smoking in all units. That I'm fine with, I get that. But what I'm not clear about is in this interim period, whether it's a public nuisance, if, if it's not a public nuisance, is there still a complaint procedure for someone who's next to a unit where someone is smoking in, in the interior of their unit? Which would be this administrative penalty?
From my, my understanding, no. In fact, that's, we would spend our time doing education and signage and all of those things. It would, that would be the phasing period while we do this, allowing-
Okay. So during this phasing period, nothing in A would restrict the ability to smoke inside their unit until 2013 or 14?
Correct.
Well, now, I thought I understood. Now, if I may, the A is simply a stopgap, if you will, while the ordinance, as, or the recommendation that then is followed by an ordinance takes full effect. So D would, has a phasing period. In the interim, we reach that phasing period through 2014, A would be used as a remedy for someone who was complaining about a neighbor smoking. Is that correct? That's how I'm understanding it, and that's how I'm reading it. Now, if you remove A, and you remove the phasing period, then the ordinance is in effect, and without a phasing period, or if you shorten the phasing period, then there's no need for A. Is that, is that correct? Because it's-
You mean, there's no A for the public nuisance part of it?
For the public nuisance component, yes. But I mean, the violation of the ordinance would still trigger some administrative remedy for, or citation for someone, because it'd be, because the ordinance would be in effect, and if you could establish a violation, exactly.
But what I, I thought I was hearing from Dr. Walsh is that the citation for smoking within an individual unit would not take place until the phasing time period.
Right, but Councilmember Tornick's comments were, let's move up the-
Right, till 2013 rather than 14. But in December of this year, if someone is smoking in an individual apartment unit, that would not be a basis for an administrative penalty. That's what I'm hearing from the council.
You essentially lose enforcement until the phasing period is completed.
Correct. But you could enforce on the exterior part of it.
Right, you could enforce on the patios, balconies, and outdoor areas, but until 2013 or 14, this ability to, to ticket or whatever would be, is completely eliminated.
From the interior, with respect to the interior?
The interior.
If you still could for the patios, balconies-
Right, that's what I said. So, okay, because I heard-
Well, you heard this one.
Yeah, so now I understand it, okay. Got it?
Let's turn to Mr. Madison, and see if there remains, after some additional discussion, any misunderstanding or confusion on the part of the council as to the direction which we're going. Steve?
My only question or comment was with regard to the phasing, I mean, isn't the idea that there are persons that may choose to relocate if they're going to smoke and they can, can no longer smoke? So I think it'd be a bit abrupt to do this overnight. I mean, I think, I don't think that would be fair on the part of the council, so. And I'm willing to trust, you know, administratively, the department to handle the phasing, and presumably there'd be a public education campaign that could accomplish some good even apart from this, because remember, about half our community live in single-family homes too, right? Or at least half the households, as I understand, are single-family homes, and the secondhand smoke's bad in multifamily settings, it's bad in single-family homes too, and so we can accomplish some good things during the phasing.
Mr. Grover?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm prepared to move forward with B and C. I think, you know, I agree that, you know, an individual's rights and where they begin to affect the rights of another. And, you know, smoking on patios and balconies and outdoor common areas is the concern that I heard most, and I think that that's much easier to establish. C, I'm fine with. I'm having a problem with item D, because we haven't yet, in my mind, established clear findings of fact and a clear standard for finding a violation. I'd be prepared to go with B and C and ask the staff to come back to us with some, with a process, with some clear findings, and a clear standard for item D.
I haven't quite heard, as between B and, and D, exactly where you are, Victor. I, I-
B and C.
B and C. It makes the point.
I'm telling you, you don't like my suggestion, Mayor. No, I'm, I'm-
It makes the point. I'm telling you, you don't like my suggestion. No, I'm, I'm, it's just what I would do.
I, I, I think prohibiting smoking on patios and balconies and in outdoor common areas, um, I, I can get there, that's, that's an easy one for me. Um, I get it, you know, we do it in metal areas. Um, requiring disclosure of the ordinance and requirements of all perspective and exist-, to all perspective and existing tenants, again, that's, that's not problematic. Um, item C, I'm sorry, D, uh, is a little more problematic for me without a clearly defined standard, uh, clearly defined facts that would, um, support a finding that someone is in violation. Um, that, that's what I'm struggling with. Uh, I, I'd like to support it, but I'd like to clearly understand what the process would be, uh, what those findings would be, uh, and what the facts to support those findings might look like.
Excuse me, city attorney? The questions that Councilmember Vice Mayor Gordo is asking, are, are, are those not, uh, specifics that would come forth in the language of the ordinance?
And the proposed ordinance?
Yes, proposed. Thank you.
And further, would it be a source of comfort to maintain a substantial, uh, transition period, uh, if it's not 2014, 2013, to allow further experience to be gained, uh, with ordinances of this kind, not only in our own city, but across the, uh, the state? Uh, I don't know exactly what the consensus of the council has been in recent minutes on, on the question of this transition under item D, as in David. But, uh, uh, one, one possibility is to just draft the ordinance and when it's been carefully looked at by this council, uh, put it into effect in the normal way. The other is to maintain a differential between regulation of outdoor space at multifamily housing and indoor space at multifamily housing, which would come into effect a year or two later.
I'd, I'd be fine with moving, you know, immediately with, as you suggest, Mark, with B and C and then phasing in D as, again, if, I, I want to see the, and if it's in the ordinance, that's fine. Uh, but I do want to see the standard and the findings to be made.
Mr. Holden?
Well, I, I was agreeing with a lot of what the Vice Mayor was saying. I think that the idea of the one-year review is to sort of get that, uh, real-life experience. And then that helps us understand, um, how to phase in this, uh, to a more hundred percent, uh, a smoke-free environment for the multi-unit housing. To have the, the review and then be able to see how, what are the, um, the, uh, issues that are coming up in the implementation and yet have already gone forward and said, but we want to see a hundred percent implementation by a time certain before we kind of gather a little bit more information. I mean, let's face it, I mean, I was sitting here when Jess Houston started us down this path, rightfully so. So yes, this has been 20 years in the making and we haven't moved very fast, but we've moved efficiently. And in a lot of ways, we, we have been cutting edge. Uh, but I think we've also asked the right questions, we've taken our time to make sure that, uh, we were mindful, obviously, of those who were impacted. And when we first started talking about restaurants, it was more the workers that we were concerned about, the waiters and the waitresses. And so, um, I think that's always gonna be front and center on this discussion and this debate. Uh, but I think we also want to make sure, because so many other cities are not quite sure how this is playing out either. And, um, you know, I think that there's a lot to be learned in the application and how we, uh, go out and start interacting and start to, 'cause you're basically talking about enforcement with one person for the entire city. I heard in the testimony, some people say, "Well, I'm, I wake up at 2:00 in the morning and with cigarette smoke coming into my unit." Now, the person could be out on their balcony smoking and so the pieces that we're addressing in that regard, I, I certainly support. But what happens, who's around to receive a call at 2:00 in the morning? Um, and, and maybe there is someone. Maybe that person, um, will be able to work effectively across the entire city 24 hours a day. I don't think so. So how do we address those kind of, um, realities of, of enforcement? Because we really do, one of the, the sort of guiding principles of any ordinance that any government body puts forward is, how can you enforce it? How real is it? How frustrated will people become if they start calling and they're unable to get, uh, the city, who now is the heavy, that's not a good word, but it is effective in terms of what we're trying to accomplish, and then we're not able to, to do what we've said we would do? And so I think it's really important that we kind of figure out how to get our arms around those pieces. So, uh, you know, that would be my reason for supporting, um, B and C and looking at the one-year, uh, review for the enforcement and, uh, look at addressing D at a later
One possibility, Chris, is to take a fresh look at D when the ordinance comes back as a whole? Or are you, are you expressing a preference that the, uh, regulation represented by D on, on this list of four not be considered in the foreseeable future?
Well, I, I mean, I think that what I understand the motion to include is a, a review period. And, I mean, I can see D being evaluated at the time that we're doing a review, whether it's six months or a year, whatever that timeframe is. So when we, um, are coming back with sort of the anecdotal or real-life, um, actions of how this is being implemented and you're reporting to us on how your efforts are going, then in that process, I think is when you would look at D. If that makes sense?
One, one, another way to do it, Chris, is to, to go forward with B, C and D, um, and not delay with the, um, phase-in period for, uh, for D. Leave the phase-in period in place and come back with a review, um, for B and C in a year to see if, because, because we can always amend the ordinance going forward if, after one year, given effect of B and C, things are just not working out or people are raising new concerns before we give, before the phase-in period for D takes place.
Well, I guess what I'm understanding is that we're giving direction to basically prepare an ordinance that would address how this would apply to inside the unit. That's what we would ultimately be voting on in 60 days.
Right, but, but a separate question-
It would automatically go into effect by a certain date.
Right, and so we could, but one suggestion that's been made is just shorten, significantly shorten the phase-in period for item D, which covers the interior. Um, if we don't shorten the phase-in period, but allow this phase-in period to remain in place and go forward with B and C immediately, um, we could then still have the benefit of a one-year review before D goes into effect. Just a suggestion.
Just to clarify, Vice Mayor, the, what I understood, your proposal would be that we'd implement B and C and D and that after one year from the ordinance adoption, you would evaluate the impact and potentially reconsider D if there are some concerns associated with implementation. But if there are none, it would still, it would be on the books and conceivably could move forward with full implementation by 2014.
Or we could delay implementation and keep the phase-in period, uh, D, keep the phase-in period to 2014. In other words, have a noticing period to, to tenants and owners alike, we're moving forward with the common areas with B and C, we're delaying implementation of D to allow the prepare, but after one year of noticing, then D goes into effect. We have a public hearing to see if it's problematic or not, uh, but D goes into effect by 2014 after that initial one-year noticing period. Is that something that we could do? I'm just trying to figure out a way to address the concerns that are being raised.
Well, I guess, um, looking at it was, in agreement with you, that B and C would move into effect as soon as, as soon as legally could be possible. That item D would, uh, also be enacted, but, uh, during this initial one-year period, it would just be an information and educational campaign and at the end of one year, we would see what the response was to B and C and what sort of feedback you're getting on the educational campaign moving toward 100% smoke-free units in 2014. And, and at, at that time, we would see if problems were developing or how much resistance or what sort of problems or encouragement we might be receiving at that time. But that it would be, but that D would be enacted, you know, B, C and D would be enacted, but only the D portion would come back for, you know, possible modification after one year based upon the results, uh, of B and C.
Yeah, that's, that's the message.
That's what I would, that's what I think Mr. Gordo said and Mr. Holden supported, and I support that.
That's what I said. If that's what I said, then, if that's what I said, then I support it too.
But I don't think it conforms with the motion, actually.
It does not, but I was gonna ask Mr. Tornick if he agrees with that since he made the amendment to, um, push it back. But he made the, the, uh, the suggestion to push the phase-in period back to 2013.
Well, I always got my second, so Terry can then second the way you're, you're describing.
I'm just asking if you agree. It can stay the same.
Uh, I, I think that Steve's second should stay in place 'cause there's obviously no support for accelerating it. I, I don't agree with, with these arguments. I think that that's too long to implement the whole thing, but the consensus, the evolving consensus seems to be that that's the time period that's gonna take to review it. So that the, the second should stay in place and, and there isn't any, my, my proposal doesn't have any legs, so. I'd rather, it's more important to get this thing passed, uh, I think, including B, C and D, even though the ultimate implementation of D would be subject to review, um, than the sort of flog, uh, trying to accelerate it.
I still think we need a statement from you, Jackie, if you'll accept the amendment.
I do accept the amendment, but I also agree with Councilmember Tornick that by eliminating or making the, uh, phase-in period for the, uh, inside-the-unit portion of this ordinance to apply, um, you know, I think, I think completely flies in the face of the whole point of the ordinance in, 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 in general. And I think that by removing the, um, the internal smoking portion of, or inside-the-units portion of it, I mean, at the end of the day, logically speaking, we're not talking about someone who smokes one cigarette per day. Anybody that's been around a smoker, and again, I know because I've been around it, by the time it's reaching your vents, you're not talking about someone that smokes one cigarette a day. Someone that's smoking half a pack, a pack, two packs a day. And so, um, I think that that's that much longer that a majority of our, uh, city's residents will have to deal with. But again, for the sake of consensus from the council and getting this passed tonight, I will agree.
That's the problem, is that's conclusion and I don't see, that's what I'm not seeing. I'm not seeing that that's, how do we make that finding? I, I think moving forward with B and C, um, immediately and, and allowing a one-year noticing period for D, um, D would then go into effect and it comes back, goes into effect if the council approves it. Uh, and I, I'd even be fine saying, have a one-year noticing period and approve it now. Um, approve it now, have a one-year noticing period, begin implementation and phase-in after a year, consistent with Councilmember McCallston's statement that we need a year of, we need some time to conduct a public information and education campaign.
We're gonna send Mike Chomsky back to Galabasas here.
Yeah, one more. So, so that is, I, I'm not sure if that is or is not consistent with Jackie, with what the make of motion, original motion accepts. Do, do, or should we just make a substitution?
It's to pre-staff recommendation amended to ensure owner, owner slash landlords are not respons-, that are, that the owners slash landlords are not responsible for enforcement with a one-year review, um, and removing the nuisance provision. And that was the one-year review of B and C. And so the phase-in period would remain 2014.
B, C?
So it, it would be a review of B and C, that would be the one-year review, and the phase-in, uh, provision would not occur for D until 2014. So in one year, you review B and C and then in 2014, D would become effective unless there was a change made by the council. That's what I've heard.
That's right, yeah.
Well, I, I think, you know, the noticing period would be, the noticing period would be between now and, you know, April 4th of 2012. April 4th of 2012, the noticing period ends and we begin the phase-in period, um, for D.
Okay, when you say noticing period, maybe you can clarify.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm using the term loosely to, to mean a public education campaign, letting people know that commencing a year from the adoption of the ordinance, uh, D would go into effect.
Okay, so-
And have a phase-in period through-
But that wasn't what, that wasn't what I said. What I, what I said was, um, was B, C and D go into effect immediately, but after one year, uh, there is a review of B, C and progress on D that would, that would come back.
When you say going to effect, I mean, you mean aiming for, for phase-in by 2014?
Correct, correct. With the one-year, with the one-year review, um, you know, based on the information gathered from B, C and the progress on D, you know, to date, based on the information campaign.
You okay with that?
Look, let me see if I can help a little bit with this. The phase-in is not 25%, 50%, 75%. It's, just means that between now and 2014, it becomes effective in 2014. So you have effectively today, three years of education.
Right, and the idea was after a year to see how it's going.
Yeah, right.
And it's not just education, it's opportunity for people to relocate if they choose.
Exactly.
But Mike, did you include also dropping the public nuisance piece from A?
He did.
Okay, and then the only other thing is when you read it just now, when you say no enforcement, uh, required by the landlord or owner, you might want to say, and this could be just detail that you can draft in the ordinance, but accept that C does require disclosure by landlords and owners.
Mm-hmm.
So you don't want that to conflict.
I did as the city.
Yes, it was just, uh-
For the administrative penalties.
I think the, the, taking the landlords off the hook really related to A.
Yes, it sounds correct now.
We still want the landlords to give notice of the ordinance.
We've spent a lot of time structuring this ordinance and I, it's, it's-
We've spent a lot of time structuring this ordinance, and it's clearly important
and worthwhile, and I think a stellar accomplishment on the part of the council. But what I heard from various persons who commented, that the, the date of 2014 maybe isn't absolutely essential, and that if that date were to be changed to 2013 in response to a thoughtful suggestion, that that would probably meet everybody's needs in the proposal that is before us. Am I missing something on that, or would, do people want to hang to 2014? I certainly readily accept that if I sense that that's really where this council is.
She hasn't changed it yet. Not to say that she won't, but-
Mr. Chomsky just read was correct. After all of the comments, that was the motion and the second that Councilmember McAllister.
Okay. Vice Mayor, that, if I could, that comment makes me think of, though, is if it's not until 2014, we could have permits being pulled for new construction. I don't think there's a lot of that, but, and it wouldn't be contemplated, I wouldn't think, that somebody could pull a permit for a new multi-unit project and have it open as a smoking project, right?
This doesn't really-
Pardon? Sorry.
This wouldn't, it wouldn't matter if it's built later or now, the-
The point, though, is, I wonder if we ought not to include something that says today, anything new is smoke-free from day one.
Oh, that's different.
No, no pun intended, day one.
That would be an E. That would be something new.
Again, I don't know how, that may just be academic, but I know in my district, we have two phases of the, we still call the Cerro Srigus project waiting, you know, somewhere in the queue. So would you accept that?
I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
To get notice that we have a new ordinance, too.
I'm not clear on what, what you're asking.
Since it's not going to be for three years until you're smoke-free, what if someone comes in tomorrow and says, I'm ready to build that 300-unit apartment building in Ambassador East? I don't think-
We're going to have to comply with it whenever it becomes effective.
Right. And what I'm saying is, as a matter of policy, I would rather have a new project just get used to the reality that they're going to be smoke-free immediately, not-
So do you, do you want a new provision that says any building permit for some type of-
You know, some cities do it this way. They say new housing is 100% smoke-free. I would add a subparaphrase E that says, new housing shall be 100% smoke-free upon adoption of the ordinance, upon the effective date of the ordinance. What did I say, multi? Yeah. What did I say?
You said multi.
Multi.
And that's with the effectiveness of the ordinance when it's brought back in June or whenever it is?
It can't be before that.
No, you weren't saying to be effective some, a year later or some other time.
Incidentally, the first phase of that project happens to be 100% smoke-free, the Westgate project. So, but I don't know, it's a new developer announcement. This is not intended on one project.
So that would be a new subparaphrase E, if is one way to describe the differentness of it. And I think I heard the maker of the motion agree that that would be acceptable. Are there other questions? Are there objections to the motion? There being none, the matter, the approval of a direction to the City Attorney along the lines of the motion is unanimously approved by the council members present. That completes the business of tonight's meeting. Council members have the opportunity to make requests for future agenda items and to ask for information that is relevant to their work in representing the people of their district and of the city. Are there any such requests, or are there any reports tonight?
Mayor?
Ms. Robinson?
First, I'd like to thank, this past weekend, the Pasadena Fire Department assisted me with hosting the annual District One PERT training. And it went very well. We had over 100 participants, and I did have to direct some of them to Councilmember McAllister's training that's happening this weekend as well. So I want to thank the Fire Department for their help. Secondly, I'm wondering if the Public Safety Committee might at some point take up the issue of making an amendment to the, I think it's the battery-operated, battery-operated airplanes in the world. I've had a number of complaints with regard to battery-operated machines. And it's my understanding that the current ordinance doesn't include battery-operated, that it's limited to, I think, gas-powered or something for model planes and those types of things. So I think it's something we should possibly discuss in public safety.
That is the subject, Jackie, of complaint on more than one occasion to me. And it's something that I enthusiastically support your suggestion that it be examined. That, I think, completes the business of tonight's meeting. Obviously, thanks are due to the council members for all of their hard work, to the staff who put it together, and to a great community who participates with us in making, I hope, thoughtful and sensible public policies for the people of Pasadena. This meeting is adjourned.